This is a public hearing of the zoning board of appeals. The zoning ordinance empowers us to hear references from the city council, petitions from other parties for variances and special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. We hear testimony from those in attendance and then make formal findings of fact based on the evidence presented, which consists of testimony and exhibits and on our knowledge of the community. We then either make a determination or a recommendation to the city council. Testimony is taken under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence and procedures, we ask that you keep your testimony relevant to the proposal as it relates to the standards contained in the zoning ordinance, and under five minutes. When you testify, please state your name and address for the record. Print your name on the sign-in sheet provided outside the door, or here if you haven't had an opportunity to do it. Each case will be introduced by staff and a list of documents will be read into the record. Then the applicant will give an explanation of the proposal. After that, those who wish to testify as either proponents or opponents of the case will have the chance to do so, and then the applicant will have a chance to respond. Any case not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next meeting. I'm Violetta Cullen, the chair, and tonight, we will be attended by Scott Magnum, the zoning administrator. Scott, could you please call the roll?
Sure. Good evening. Member Zorden?
Okay.
Member Mirchif?
Here.
Mayor Evervill?
Here.
Mayor Deacon?
Here.
Member Colley?
Present.
Member Gingold?
Present.
And Chair Cullen?
Present. I'm going to ask everybody who intends on testifying to raise your right hand so I can give you this oath. That's a lot of you. I will now swear in anyone who plans to give a testimony of the case as scheduled for tonight. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you will provide in connection with this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Under our agenda, the first order of business is approval of the meeting minutes from July 16th, 2019. Has everyone had a chance to read them?
Yes.
Are there any corrections?
I motion approval of the meeting minutes.
A second?
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, on to old business.
Accusals.
What's that?
Abstentions.
Are there any abstentions?
I abstain.
Oh, thank you, Scott.
As do I, as I was absent from the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to old business. Scott, will you read the first order of old business into the record?
Yes, it's a continued item at 2221 Maple Avenue. Adam Wilmot, architect, applies for major zoning relief to construct a four-story, 12-dwelling-unit multifamily residence with off-site parking in the R5 general residential district. The apparent request, a 40-foot lot width, which is existing, where 50 feet is required for multifamily residences, and 12 dwelling units where nine units are allowed, including the inclusionary housing bonuses as part of the two affordable units proposed. The zoning board appeals is the determining body for this case. The case has been continued two times, and there is now a revised proposal, which was indicated with the four stories and 12 units from the previously proposed five stories and 15 units, and staff is recommending approval of this.
Will the respondent for 2211 Maple, please approach the podium?
Good evening.
Again, John Zemanek, I'm the attorney for the petitioner. Thank you again for your patience and the input over the last two public hearings on this project. As Scott mentioned, this project has gone from a five-story, 15-unit building to a four-story, 12-unit multifamily apartment building. And importantly, the proposal still includes the two onsite inclusionary housing units. The owner has shown his willingness to work with the city, its staff, its residents, to create a project that now, we believe, fits the character of the neighborhood. Throughout this whole process, the owner's shown a willingness to work with staff and revise the project as needed. He met with the DAPR committee, and in response to suggestions they had, he incorporated those suggestions into this project. And during the course of the public hearing, hearing from some of the surrounding residents who felt that the height and the density were too great, has now again modified the proposal to meet their concerns. The alderwoman has, well, previously wrote a letter indicating that she supports a project at four stories and 12 units. And previously, we indicated that all of the surrounding property owners within the block that completely surround this property are in support of this project. So while we still need a variance for the number of units requested, it is far less than what was originally proposed, and we think we've got a hardship based on the narrow lot and other factors to justify the number of units that are proposed. And of course, the 40-foot lot width, the petitioner did not create that, and it's somewhat of unique hardship, so we requested variance for that. And with that said, I would like the architect, Adam Wilmot, to briefly show what this building now looks like in its smaller form and open it up for questions and comments.
My name is Adam Wilmot, ZPDNA Architects from Chicago. Is it possible to bring up the exhibits that we submitted on the overhead?
Sir, there are several members here who were not present at the last meeting, so could you please go over these changes in detail?
Yes.
Thank you.
Didn't start there. That's good, thank you. There's no real change to this exhibit. We've seen this in the past two presentations. It essentially establishes the location of our site and the public amenities nearby, reinforcing that this site does work as a transit-oriented development. It makes sense as a transit-oriented development. We think that's important because we are using some bonuses as a TOD district to apply to our proposed development. The next slide, please. Again, no change here. This is just a review of the existing condition of the property, again illustrating that it has no real conformance to its surroundings. It's underutilized, it's dilapidated, and we're proposing that we replace it. The proposed is now reduced, as we've mentioned, to a four-story, 12-unit building. We are still maintaining the use of what is currently 16 garages will be converted to 15, as one of the, or two of the existing garages will be combined to create a required handicap-accessible parking space. No other changes to the site have been proposed at this time. This exhibit has illustrated the surrounding density, so our stand on this has always been that this property is a classic infill property. It is surrounded by higher density. Properties are also existing non-conforming. However, now it's notable that at 12 units rather than 15 units, we are at 592 square feet per dwelling unit, which is well within the average of the other properties that we've highlighted on this slide. Again, further illustrating the surrounding density, I think we've shown this multiple times. We are still providing two onsite inclusionary housing units for a total of 12 units, which brings us to, I'm sorry if I misspoke, it is 582 square feet per dwelling unit. You'll note that the property directly north of us is far denser at 447 square feet per dwelling unit. The property directly across the street is almost identical at 548 square feet per dwelling unit. And the property to our south, while slightly less dense, is still at 737 square feet per dwelling unit, all of which are well beyond the density that would be allowed if you were building any of those new on these particular properties. So in review, from a parking standpoint, we've implemented three additional electric charging stations. That was a request at DAVER. We have our ADA complaint, and then the rest of the enclosed garages will be deeded to the apartments, meaning that the apartments, a parking space will come with every apartment that's rented. In this case, there will be additional parking beyond the apartments that we're providing. Fifteen spaces, 12 dwelling units. This also puts us well in excess of what the minimum required was. So at 15 dwelling units, we were just meeting the required parking. We will now be in excess of the required parking for this proposed development. Building height is proposed at 46 feet, which we show is comparable to the buildings on either side. No change to this. This again illustrates the parking displacement. There had been some questions about that. We've addressed them by trying to provide an exhibit that shows where the addresses of the people who were currently leasing those garages. So none of them are within even several miles of the site. Next slide, please. From a landscape perspective, there are a few trees that need to be removed from the site in order to provide space for the new development. And then on our next slide, I believe, we'll show the proposed landscaping. Again, none of this has changed from previous proposals. We are still committed to providing far beyond what the required landscaping would be. We feel that that is part of the public benefit here, to provide a nice buffer between our building and the public way, as well as a improved sightline from the public alley. Next slide, please. There had been a question at the first meeting here about stormwater, so we do have a preliminary plan that shows the strategy. This has been reviewed with engineering staff of the city. The calculations are, to our knowledge, compliant and workable. We've even go so far as to make sure that this particular element fits into the budget of the project.
Can you describe that solution just in a little bit more detail?
It's an underground stormwater detention tank, essentially. And it is outside of the landscaped area, outside of the tree root system. Again, highlighting the additional landscaping.
Sorry, so is that engineered to funnel to the tank? So is it engineered so that rainwater will funnel to the tank?
Yes.
Okay.
So again, no change to this slide. Again, excessive amount of landscaping to both the front and rear yards of the property. Next slide, please. Level one remains the same as what we've had in the past. It is a, there's a mix of a three-bedroom, a one-bedroom, and a studio. The studio will be one of the inclusionary housing units. Next slide, please. The second floor is a mix of three-bedroom and one-bedroom. Next slide. Level three, essentially the same, a pair of three bedrooms and a one-bedroom. Next slide. And fourth floor, again, the same. So essentially, it's the same floor plan stacked three times. Outside of reducing the height, the building design at this point remains much the same. The general aesthetic is one of punched openings with a pedestrian level, if you will. So the first floor is scaled to address the street level, as buildings of the neighboring character also do. Punched openings, and then materials of currently proposed as zinc siding. So zinc was chosen because it has a similar patterning, or can have in this case, will have a similar pattern to a running bond brick, although a larger scale than that. And will still show some age and patina over time, which we think is important. Next slide. This illustrates the reduced height of the building relative to other buildings neighboring us from the street perspective, which we think is probably the most important perspective of the project, as this is how most people will experience the building and its mass. Next slide. And then an artistic rendering from a more bird's-eyeed angle, showing it relative to the neighboring property to itself. With that, I'll open it up to... Or do you want to speak? With that, then we'll just open it up to questions.
Okay, so my question is, what did you say the building height was?
Forty-six feet.
Okay, my notes say 44. I'm not sure where there's the discrepancy. Has there been a change?
It's 44 feet to the top of the roof and an additional two feet of parapet height.
Okay. Has there been a change to the facade?
Not at this time, no.
Not since the last meeting you were here?
No, other than that it's a story shorter, no.
Can you speak to the parking covenant?
That I would defer to John.
Thank you.
There are two concerns regarding parking. One was, the city wanted, city staff asked for assurances that the parking in the garage to the rear of this property will be used solely for the tenants of this property and not rent it out to other people. The petitioner has agreed to that. That will be a covenant that's part of every lease and recorded against the property, and I assume will be a condition of issuance of a building permit. The other concern, and I'm sure it's a concern of any residents, is will there be public street parking by these apartment unit dwellers? And because there is sufficient parking in the garages, the petitioner has agreed to not allow public street parking for any of the residents who reside here. That would be a condition of the lease, and the city ethic maintains record, they have to issue a permit, a street parking permit, and would not issue it for this address.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I had a quick question. You had mentioned that Alderman Rue Simmons had suggested that she would back this plan at 12 units. That's not exactly how I read her letter. Did she actually give you a revised letter saying that she backs the project at this point? Because she had said, she said that she respects the developer and that he is a good player in the business community and the neighborhood, and that overall, she backed the plan with a few fewer units and, you know, less density, but she was not specific. So I'm wondering if she has in fact endorsed this plan as it now stands?
Paul Harb, 107 Green Bay Road, Wilmot. Actually, she did call me yesterday, and she asked me if, I should ask her to draft another letter supporting this project. So I told her that her first letter was clear, and I did not ask her for another, though she was willing to make another letter supporting this project.
So it is your testimony that as this project stands at 12 units and four stories, that you have the full backing of Alderman Simmons?
Alderman Rue Simmons, correct.
Okay, thank you.
What kind of elevator are you using? Why the tower is so tall? Can you use an elevator with a smaller tower?
Yeah, that's a preliminary estimation.
So it's still not spec'd?
No.
Okay.
But... No, I think at four stories, we're very likely to end up with a holeless hydraulic, which would maybe have a four-foot overrun.
Yeah, exactly. So you will lower it a little bit?
Almost certainly.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Finished? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to close testimony and invite members of the public to speak. Could you step up to the podium if you intend to speak to this project and state your name and address for the record? Is there anyone who'd like to speak about it?
I would just request, since we have so many items on the docket tonight, if you could please try to address your comments to the revisions to the proposal, to the extent there's negative comments and/or positive comments, rather than reiterate things that have been said at the last two meetings on the proposal.
And similarly, if you agree with the person who has come before you, you're welcome to say, "I agree with the comments that have been stated previously."
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Doherty, 2122A Maple Avenue. And I'll be quick, but I want to give a little bit of a context here. In the last 20 years, a very short piece of maple has probably seen 12 houses go from owner-occupied or owner-occupied and rental. That has changed the nature of the street. Because the city, and things get compartmentalized. You do your job really well, okay? But there's other aspects of the city that fail, and the failure has been, do we enforce the ordinance on the street for rental? I see basement apartments get built out, and I don't believe they're supposed to have those, but those don't get retracted. There's the latest home being renovated right now and changed to its two units, but I see three power boxes on the outside of that house. Okay, that's a concern. So my concern is, the city does not do their follow-up diligence here, and that has alienated the neighborhood in why there's some resistance. So the variances increase a potential here. Up front, we are saying, you don't have to be within these ordinances, we're going to let you go beyond the ordinances. That creates a concern because there are now homes within this footprint. If you say, "We're only going to talk about the north end of the street," there's a home right across the street, and you could use the same rationale and say, "Now we're going to tear that one down, and we're going to build something larger, and we're going to need variances, possibly." So that's the concern. There's a trend in the history here, and we think that this lot has ordinances and that the city created the ordinances. I think they're on to the benefit of the community. Somebody thought about that. So I would say, let them build within the ordinances as they are.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Scott, would you like to speak to enforcement?
Yes, thank you, Chair. If there are any potential violations, you can certainly report those to the city. We'd be able to investigate those. A building permit would be required for something like building out a basement unit where there's not one currently, depending on the zoning restrictions and the lot. It may be able to, may be achieved with a permit. It may need a variance, but it would be something someone would have to come in for. So if you do know of something, please let us know about that, and we can investigate that. Thank you.
Is that real, or...?
Yeah, call 311 would be the best method.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Mark Bean. I live at 2128 Maple, and I've addressed this property before in writing. And before you, the revised proposal does address some of the issues that we've raised previously, but it still doesn't warrant the major release that the developer is asking for, nor does it satisfy the requirements for major variance in the zoning court. It would have an adverse impact on the neighborhood, as Mr. Doherty described. It is not in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance in the preservation of the single and multifamily neighborhood in the R4A district immediately adjacent to this property. The practical difficulty that the developer says he faces is not unique to this property. There are other 40-foot plots in the neighborhood. Mr. Harb would suffer no particular hardship were these variances not granted. He bought this property knowing full well what the zoning provided, and he's capable of building within the zoning. He could build a single or two-family house, or he could, if the 50-foot variance were granted, he could build a multifamily house, but he'd have to do three fewer units, which he's surely capable of doing. There's no reason it couldn't be done. Mr. Harb does not suggest any reason for seeking to build additional units on top of what could be built without a variation, or even what could be built with the variation and then the bonuses he gets for the affordable housing unit, other than a desire to make more money. There's no benefit to the surrounding neighborhood or to the city as a whole, except for the very real contribution of the two affordable units in the building, which we commend Mr. Harb for. We think that affordable housing is an important facet of development in the city, but that the inclusionary housing bonus has made a judgment about the degree of extension of existing zoning restriction or extinction of existing zoning restrictions that are to be granted in consideration for inclusionary housing. That's a well-deliberated and thoroughly discussed issue the city council's made a judgment on that's embodied in the ordinances and the inclusionary ordinance and the zoning ordinances. That judgment ought to be respected.
Sir, you have one minute left.
As I said in my July 12th email, the developer's alleged difficulty in, that he claims he faces is entirely of his own making. He brought the property knowing what he got, and the requested relief is not the minimum change needed to permit the use of the property. He could well develop it within the existing zoning ordinances. I note that if the relief sought is granted, the zoning department has raised some issues for further discussion, including the facade of the building, which I believe has changed materially since the initial presentation, and also a mechanism to be certain that the parking solution that is described is one that the owner and the city can and will both enforce.
Thank you so much for your comments. Good evening.
Hello. I'm Toni Ray. I live at 1020 Grove. I'm representing Joining Forces for Affordable Housing. As you can tell, we represent, one of our goals is to have more affordable housing in Evanston, which is currently a goal, I think, throughout the United States. We need more affordable housing. And one of our goals is, if you work in Evanston, you should be able to afford to live in Evanston. So we're pleased that in this revised plan, there are still two affordable units. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments? Thank you. Comments from the board? Okay, I'm going to ask you to respond. Yes, thank you.
Paul Harb, 107 Green Bay Road, Wilmot. Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to say thank you for the interest that you showed in the project that my team and I proposed to you. Over the last three ZBA sessions, it took us some time, but I think we incorporated your comments. I want to specifically thank city staff, Alderman Rue Simmons, and every person who helped me so far. Your valuable comments and Q&amp;A sessions helped us address major concerns that you and neighbors have expressed. We're able to reduce the density, but also reduce the height, the non-problematic height of the building, to a level that matches the adjacent two buildings. However, this could come at a price where we might take out the basement as an amenity for the future residents in order for the reduced density project to make sense. Our hope was to get approved for the originally requested density, so we wouldn't have to stretch the project financials to this level. Again, I want to say thank you for everyone who supported me, neighbors, landlords, contractors, and city staff. This is Melissa Claus, Mr. Scott Magnum, and I'm looking forward to working with everyone else, starting now, during the breaking grounds, and throughout the completion of the project, but also every other project that I will propose to the city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. With that comment, I'm going to close testimony and ask the board to comment on this. It's not perfect, but it's a lot different than it was the first time.
Yeah, I mean, my overall comment is, I, this is how the process should work, not necessarily over three zoning board meetings, but the developers should communicate with zoning and with neighbors and address real concerns. And I think this is an impressive response to the comments that the board provided at both of the last meetings and that neighbors provided as well. It's not perfect. It is a unique property that, as the first... It is a unique property that, as the first neighbor commenter tonight pointed out, is in a neighborhood that already has changed in character. And the single-family home that sits on the property is actually out of character with the buildings that are around it. And so this is an infill. And again, it's not perfect, but I commend the developer for the concessions they've made, and particularly for keeping the affordable units as part of the development. And so with these changes, I'm in favor of the proposal.
I, to a large extent, I share Scott's sentiments on this, because the, this building is now in density and height at the same level as the buildings around it. And I think that the buildings immediately on the corner of the TOD neighborhoods, you know, as typically when the zoning was redone along Chicago Avenue, the change in zoning applied to Chicago Avenue and the first quarter block around each street that, that met Chicago Avenue. And in effect, that's what this is doing. I think that this, it, it is a difficult project when all of the buildings around you are three and a half or four stories and at a greater density, to complete a project that will be financially viable. And, and I think with the purchase of the garages and with vigilant enforcement of the parking regulations as they have been proposed, that the impact should not be that great on the neighborhood if there are three additional dwelling units in this building. And I think that it will increase the tax basis and ultimately enhance values in the neighborhood. That would be my thought on it.
I share sentiment with what my colleagues have presented so far. I think this is unbalanced, a good project, inappropriate for a TOD area, supports the vitality of that corridor, and is, is appropriate for the site and what has become, you know, of that area as, you know, additional development has happened around that TOD area. So I do support the project.
I'm in support of the project. I think the developers took it, took our comments and the neighbors' comments to heart and incorporated less density all around. So I'm in favor.
I'll just echo some of my colleagues' comments. They strike true with me as well. I appreciate the, the approach that you've taken in developing in response to the comments that you've received from the city. I, I do empathize with the community. I understand where you're coming from. I would as well have concerns, but I don't think that those concerns are out of character with areas that are on these borders of different zoning areas. So I do think that on balance, that this is a positive project for the street. I don't think it's out of context. And I do think that on balance, it's a positive.
My comments, I agree with what my colleague said. I will afford again to advise the architect and the developer for some small things. It's well proportionate now. It's a good, good-looking building. Still, it needs a little bit more blending in the environment, either as material or as proportions between openings and mass. So probably you'll have some time to think about this and improve it. The second thing I mentioned about the elevator tower, reduce it. You don't need it so high, and it will be not a good thing over there. And the, the last thing, I mentioned it last time, it's not a zoning issue, but you still have four apartments that are completely oriented to north. I don't think that a family will like to raise children without seeing the sunlight. So think about this once again. Otherwise, zoning-wise, I'm okay with the project.
I as well support the project. I feel like we've come a really long way, both the neighbors and the developers, and I feel like we can move forward. I'm going to run through the standards and ask my board that if you disagree with any of the standards, please speak up before I move on to the other. Thank you. Okay, variation standards. For a variation to be recommended for approval, the ZBA must find that the proposed variation one will not have a substantial adverse impact on the used enjoyment or property values of adjoining properties. The existing two-family residence is in dire need of rehabilitation, is in conflict with the highest and best use for this site, considering its location in a TOD area. The proposed use mass and bulk of the proposed building is appropriate and will have a minimal impact on adjacent properties of similar, similar scale and density. The proposed infill development will directly benefit the vibrancy of Noys Street and downtown commercial districts and will likely increase the property values in the neighborhood. Number two.
I just, let me add to that.
Okay, please.
For the neighbors' benefit. I think there certainly, there's been testimony of neighbors that perceive there will be some negative impact or some diminishment of their enjoyment of their properties. It's understandable and fair. That is not the standard. The standard is not, am I going to enjoy my property less? It is, is it going to have a substantial adverse impact on the neighborhood? And while there sometimes can be a negative impact or a negative perceived impact, on balance, development like this ought to have a positive impact, certainly a positive economic impact on the neighborhood.
Thank you, Scott.
Can I just throw in very quickly to this? And for the neighbors, for the neighbors as well, one of the important aspects of this to not have an adverse impact on your enjoyment of your properties is to call 311 if you see that there's any violation in the parking agreements that have been outlined here, or, or anything else. So, you know, work in concert with the developers now and the city to make sure that they do what they said they're going to do.
Anyone else? Okay, standard number two. Is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. The proposed development promotes the public health morals, general welfare, and objectives of the comprehensive general plan, as well as enhance the taxable value of the property. Minimum lot width is required to ensure adequate building massing and minimal impact on adjacent properties and uses. The maximum number of units is intended to provide adequate living conditions for the residents or the tenants. The opportunity to utilize immediately adjacent off-street parking allows for increased bulk and subsequently increased space for adequately sized dwelling units. All requested zoning relief is needed to maximize the public benefit the site offers in a TOD area proximate to the commercial district and public open space. Number three. Has a hardship or practical difficulty that is peculiar to the property. The existing and unique lot width presents no option to construct, construct a multiple-family residential building appropriate in a TOD area without zoning relief. Number four. The property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. Without the requested zoning relief, infill development on this location would not be financially feasible. Due to the fair market value of the property and subsequent development costs, a reasonable economic return on investment would not be possible. Number five. Is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property or public benefit to the whole will be derived. Development with the proposed number of units will provide a public benefit, not only with two onsite inclusionary units, but also by providing a needed housing typology in a TOD area, and increasingly proximate neighborhood and commercial district vibrancy. Number six. Does not have a hardship or practical difficulty that was created by any person having an interest in the property. The property was platted at its size and width prior to the current ownership. The small lot width and size reduces the number of dwelling units allowed to an amount substantially lower than surrounding properties. Number seven. Is limited to the maximum, minimum charge necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty. The applicant has worked diligently with the community to modify the proposal to minimize the necessary zoning relief and continues to propose two affordable onsite units in order to utilize zoning bonuses and reduce variation. Does everyone concur?
Yep.
Can someone please call a motion?
I will make the motion in the matter of ZBA 19ZMJV-0054 with regard to the property at 2211 Maple, since we are the determining body for the case that we approve the zoning relief requested, subject to the condition that the property be developed in accordance with the documents, revised documents and testimony submitted, with a special call-out that, that those two parking covenants are material from a zoning perspective and must be a part of the leases for the building.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Thank you. I'm going to ask that if you're leaving after this, please leave quietly. We're going to move on to the next case. Onto new business. 1009 Harvard Terrace. Scott, will you read that into the record?
Yes, Chair calling members of the board, members of the public. This is an appeal of the zoning administrator's decision. Joshua W. Burton and Deborah S. Burton, property owners, appeal to zoning administrator's decision to partially deny minor zoning relief to construct a tandem two-car garage with 40.9% building coverage where 40% is allowed, 55.7% impervious surface coverage where 55% is allowed, a one-foot west interior side setback where three feet is required, and an eight-foot separation between the principal structure and accessory structure where 10 feet is required within the R2 single-family residential district. The appellant was granted partial relief to either A, construct a one-car detached garage not to exceed 22 feet in depth, and a one-foot setback from the west interior side property line with the ability to maintain the existing driveway from the street, or B, construct a two-car detached garage with building lot coverage of 40.9%, located at least three feet from the west interior side property line with access from the alley and removal of the existing driveway from the street. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. City staff recommends that the zoning board affirm the decision of the zoning administrator to partially deny zoning relief and to construct the two tar, to construct the two-car detached garage, and then the preference, again, with the two options that were given, would be the option B is, is an option that would be more minimally deviating from the standards. Concludes the summary of the staff report. Thank you.
Hi, are you the respondents?
We are. We're the homeowners.
Please describe what your option, you decided to take, if it's not either this one or that one, or which one you'd like, or the combination thereof.
All right. So the, so the situation.
Could you speak into the mic?
I'm sorry.
Your name and address, please.
Joshua Burton, Deborah Burton, 1009 Harvard Terrace. We submitted some drawings and a letter in addition to our application. I don't know whether they're.
Could you pull them up, Scott?
Available. Let's see, it may be a little hot. No, oh. I have copies here. If it's, that's the application, so if we could, you see, that's our letter. This is, okay. So you can see the existing garage here, the, which was built 95 years ago. It opens forward. We have a long ribbon driveway on the side of the house, and then an apron leading to the garage. It doesn't open on the back alley, as most of our neighbors' garages currently do. We have an electric car and solar power on the house, and we intend to buy a second electric car. So being able to charge the car in a safe indoor position rather than have a 240-volt outlet in the rain and snow is an important value to us. We also are on a street, Harvard Terrace is a one-way street with very limited parking that is always filled up by 10 minutes past 5:00 in the afternoon. And when we entertain friends, the fact that we have the ability on the side ribbon driveway to park five cars, especially since some of our friends are disabled and some of our friends are more observantly Jewish than we are, and will leave the car on a Friday afternoon and come back and pick it up Saturday night, is a big deal. The alternative would be for friends to park many blocks away. There really isn't any available parking, except for Barton, within many blocks of us. And so, and all of the neighbors sort of equally comment that, you know, parking limitation is sort of the fly in the ointment of a beautiful, lovely street. The plan that we have is really a game of inches, because we want a tandem garage that enables parking from the back, turning a tight turn from the alley, and parking from the front, making you can see a subtle S around the house to get in and make it possible. This plan, we've been over and over, I, I was noodling this out for two years before we actually submitted the initial proposal. And we have sort of, by game of inches, reduced the size once, and now again with the current proposal, we are no longer requesting a variance on the impervious coverage. We were very close already. We were able to reduce 28 feet of impervious coverage. If you can go to the next slide or the next picture, you can see the part that's hatched. We've gotten rid of a little bit of paving in the front and a little bit of paving in the back. We are now conforming as to impervious coverage. We are 48 square feet over as to area under roof, but basically, the only area under roof that we're adding is area that was previously driveway. If we narrowed the garage even another foot, it makes the turn from the alley extremely difficult. If we didn't, we, we've sort of measured the turning radius, and that's what we've got. You could narrow it maybe another six inches and back and fill and get in, but there's a tree in the alley, and so there's not much give at the back. In the front, the one-foot setback from the neighbors' property, which we currently have on the old garage, was built that way 95 years ago, because it's the only way that the ribbon driveway works. If you pull it farther out from the side, you have to make an S. And as you can see, since we've made the garage longer, the S becomes more difficult in the front than it would have been before. The, the separation from the house of eight feet, two feet less than permitted by the, the ordinance, gives us exactly 34 feet of garage length for two cars that total 31 feet 3 inches. And so we're, we're very tight on that as well, but we can make it work with the existing design. We would be extremely open to any marginal change that keeps the overall scheme of using the existing driveway as the space for the second car for parking. But honestly, after everything that we've inched away, since all the constraints interact closely with each other, we don't see that there is a whole lot, there's a whole lot more leeway, or a whole lot more that we actually could reduce on this while still letting it work this way. Our fallback design, I guess, would be to put a one-car garage in this position, the Plan A of the board, and just arrange to park the, give charging for a second car outdoors rather than indoors. The point that I'd especially like to draw attention to is that the side fence, which separates us from the neighbor, is currently a high fence, more than eyeball height, so there's no visibility between us. When we talked to Michael Griffith at the, at the zoning board after the administrator had initially, had turned, had partially denied our initial proposal, he said that there had been no objection from neighbors at that point, but that the administrator had felt a concern that with only the eight-foot separation from the house and a one-foot setback from the adjacent property, the next-door neighbor would feel walled in. And we therefore went to the neighbor who has been part of this project. He's a valued friend who's been part of, we've been in touch with him throughout the project, and we got a letter, which is also attached, which we've submitted, that says that he in fact has no objection at all. He had, he has right now 19-foot of brick wall, 19 feet of brick wall and 24 feet of high fence separating him from us. With the proposal as designed, he will have 34 feet of garage wall of the same height and eight feet of fence, which we will build and provide, of the same height. And he considers the difference between the two to him in terms of the aesthetics and enjoyment of his backyard to be minimal. In fact, he says that he doesn't particularly like the view of the four-story apartment building two houses away, and so if anything, the garage shields him from that more. He, his property is the only property that's directly affected by this, and the one comment that he made about the overall impact is the one that we've been emphasizing, that getting our two cars off the street all the time, rather than having them juggle to get one in and one out and take a space on the street when we can get it, just in order to make sure we have the flexibility for whoever's going to get out first. To have two cars with two separate exits means that we will never use a street parking space, and our friends and guests, when they come over, will never use one either, because they have our long driveway. And so this is a plan that we have thought through. And so, this is a plan that we have thought through very carefully. We have sort of worked hard to try and make it work for... Do no harm to anybody else and do us a great deal of good, do the neighborhood some good by releasing parking, and finally, do the world a little bit of good because the reason why we... The fundamental reason why we want covered parking is because we are all in on the idea of reducing our carbon footprint by planning for a 21st century garage in a 21st century world.
Thank you. You have comments, ma'am? You don't? Comments from the board?
There is so much to applaud about your intentions in this, the electric cars and accommodating your friends and taking out more impervious surface, et cetera. But I do think that the zoning administrator offered reasonable alternatives to you. To some extent, this seems to me as though you want to have your cake and eat it too. You want the two-car garage, but you also want the large driveway on which you can park vehicles as well. And I think that the intent of the zoning laws as we have them, you know, in terms of the problems with fire department regulations and other dwelling units or other units on the property being too close to one another, that's a concern. The massing might not be a concern for your neighbor now, but the next person who moves into that house might say this is not appropriate. So I think that there are alternatives available to you to house both of your cars in a two-car garage, or there's the alternative to keep the one-car garage and then maintain the driveway. But I think that asking for both of those when it is not conforming with the zoning ordinances, I can't see how the administrator was incorrect in his finding.
I agree that it's entirely a judgment call. I think the... And that, you know, the zoning ordinances exist for an appropriate purpose. I think that the impervious surface one we are particularly sensitive to because we feel that that impacts the entire neighborhood. We, you know, we want to make sure that we're not creating runoff inappropriately. And the fact that the garage, that the footprint, if you could go back to the overlay here that shows that the footprint of the new garage is almost entirely on surface that's already paved right now, is something that we couldn't possibly get in a two-car garage with... I mean, the alternative design of a two-car garage that gives up on the front access and only has access to the rear, that would let us move three feet back from the property line, which gives... If that's what the zoning says, but that's not what the logic of the property was at the time the property... At the time the garage was built, the existing garage is at a one-foot setback for a reason, namely that the side of the house gives sort of that alignment to it. Moving it over here, we would certainly lose our backyard and gain a sort of a side strip that we don't... We wouldn't currently have much use for. But, I mean, honestly, the flexibility in our neighborhood to be able to park guest cars when, you know, sort of having guests for meals is an important part of our lifestyle. And when our friends have got, you know, various mobility challenges, both sort of, you know, religious and physical, is a big deal. There is no question that of the options that the zoning administrator has put before us, the one-car garage is workable, less desirable to us. The two-car garage opening to the rear only is sort of... We'd lose our backyard. We'd lose our side strip.
Drive.
And the city wouldn't gain any net coverage of anything because basically the garage that's created would cover a big, big chunk of our backyard, whereas this garage covers essentially nothing that isn't already covered, which is why we're able to, as you say, have our cake and eat it too.
Right.
We're not asking for more coverage. We're just using the existing coverage more cleverly by keeping the ribbon, which doesn't take that much impervious surface, and by being very stingy with the impervious surface that we're adding in the back, all we're doing is taking a chunk of pavement and putting a roof over it. And that roof is very valuable to us precisely because of the special needs of a car that has to sit and charge for hours every night.
I think that an open driveway has a different impact than a structure. So, you know, once again, I just don't see where the zoning administrator found incorrectly, and I think that they tried to make available options to you. So that would be my...
When was the existing garage built?
We believe it was built with the house in 1924, and it's 19 feet long and 12 feet wide. It is... It has an eight-foot door. It's perfectly suitable for a 1924 car. The deal back then, as I understand it, is you opened the gate at the back edge of the house, you rolled up the garage, you cranked your car, and you got out for your Sunday drive.
And you park your existing electric car in the garage now?
No. We can't... Opening the gate and getting to the back garage right now is way too much work for us even to try. The garage is currently being used just as a shed. We park the electric car on the side of the house and are running a sort of, first of all, 110-volt power, so it takes forever to charge, but running a long cord. I wouldn't put a 240-volt outlet where the car is currently being charged outdoors. If you held me to it and if we wound up with the one-car garage, I would put a good charging station inside the garage, and I would mount a second charging... One-car garage, basically in the position where the existing one is, maybe a couple of feet forward, but with a door both front and back to at least give us that flexibility. And I would mount... I would put the second charger just outside the garage there on the same 100-amp line so that it could be charged sitting in the front driveway. I'll note, by the way, that the neighbor's property currently... We only see this fence here, and he'll now see that, so there's a tiny...
Sir, just a minute. Sir, if you're going to step away from the microphone, could you use this?
I'm terribly sorry. I didn't mean... I just wanted to point out that in terms of the one person who actually will ever see this, which is the neighbor living on that property, they are actually gaining a tiny, thin wedge of our property that they'll be using with the new fence alignment that they aren't using currently. It's not enough square footage to really matter to anybody. The total amount is a matter of 10 square feet. But we're not actually... The argument that we're taking away from the neighbor by putting a building up against him and by restricting his sort of psychological space through that eight-foot gap, in fact, the gap is completely covered by a fence. And so, the only perceptible thing, as testified by the neighbor's letter, is that we are basically giving him, along with everybody else in our neighborhood, more street parking than they currently have.
Have a consideration of a carport.
We would actually be... As we understand the zoning ordinance, a carport has the same restrictions on it as 40...
That's true.
But we would be perfectly... Not perfectly comfortable, but we would certainly take as a first and a half choice, less good than what we have, but better than anything that we've seen, a one-car garage with a carport in front of it on the one-foot alignment as we're seeing it. In other words, basically on the footprint that this garage now exists. And we expect that the west wall of such a carport, that the neighbor would actually want us to put up a fence there of comparable height, and so it really wouldn't be different from a wall on that side, if you see what I'm saying. So it wouldn't... I mean, if you had an open carport there, you'd still have a fence right next to it on that side because the neighbor certainly doesn't want us opening up to his property. He likes the fact that we have the privacy of a fence along that wall, or a wall of a garage along that wall, or conceivably some carport arrangement along that wall. So yes, we would certainly be open to that idea, but I'm not sure it buys that much because the carport would still... I mean, we'd have to design the fence and the carport on that side in concert, so it would kind of be a one-walled garage, so to speak, rather than a carport.
Yeah, but you significantly reduce the bulk of tandem garage. That's one of the points that my colleagues express here because this is really a bulky structure. If you have a single car garage and a carport, no matter or including variances that you need, at least you'll have a less bulkier structure.
I'd love to agree with you entirely and say that that's right because we're not opposed to doing it. But if you imagine... I'm sorry, I shouldn't step away from the mic.
No, I understand. I understand this very well.
If you imagine the three-dimensional space taken up by the carport, it has basically a wall on this side. It has a roof on this side. So all you're doing is you're replacing one roof of... One wall of the garage with perhaps a pillar or whatever is needed to hold it. And so, you're opening up our backyard a little bit.
Correct.
But you're not opening up a neighbor's. So as the property is seen from anywhere off of our property, I'm not sure I agree that you are reducing the mass, the visible size, but I'd like to agree because if that means agreement, I'm certainly amenable to doing it. And if that's the board's opinion, then we will... You know, as I say, the carport is better than what we have right now, and we'll go trotting right back to our garage, to our engineer, and ask him to, you know, design something that conforms to the idea.
If you're open to such a solution, your current red outline is 14 feet wide and I believe 34 feet long.
That's correct, except at the very front where it's only 12 feet wide in order to give access.
So in order to kind of reduce the number of variances, why don't you make, let's say, the new car space 12 feet wide all along? You will reduce your variances regarding the impervious surface and the footprint.
So I haven't... In order to do that, I mentioned in the letter that the... And we've talked to the... Because we had some back and forth with Michael Griffith about that, we talked to the structural engineer that the city relies on for this, and he told us that with the standard design of a garage, we need at least 16-inch and then basically 18-inch door jams on each side of the door. It's not that we need 14 feet of width, it's that we need 11 feet of door at the back end to get a car around that curve to get in. And so, 11 feet plus 18 inches on each side was 14. There's a lot to be gained, as you said, in total bulk by narrowing down the garage. And if you were to tell us that you need it a foot narrower, we would immediately try to figure out how to get by with just about six inches less door than we really need by backing and filling and getting in and reduce the jams by a few inches to make it work as well. If you told us to narrow it by two feet, it's more difficult because we really are tight.
You can go the sides... I'm sorry. You can... This is a structural problem.
Yes.
But there is a solution that you can have only 12 inches on the side. So there are structural solutions that could be...
With 12 inches on the sides, we have no objection at all to 13-foot width.
Excuse me. Sorry. Scott, is the only issue in this case is the issue of appeal and whether the zoning administrator's decision was correct, right? Like, there's nothing we can do procedurally right now to be trying to come up with more solutions.
If the applicant were to present something else, you could grant a different variance, but at that point, it would need to return. Staff need to review that, see what the variances would be needed for that.
You'd be willing to present whatever you ask us to present.
I think given the interest of time, we should ask any more questions we have and see if there's neighbor comments at all.
Okay. So I'm going to say that if you're going to revise your proposal, we're going to need to do a new zoning analysis on your different structure. So we're going to have to continue this case. We're going to take your neighbor... Any... If there's any comments on the neighbor? Yes?
I think what Scott was suggesting was a little different. First, we need to make a motion as to whether we agree or disagree with the zoning administrator's decision, right? We need to hear... And then I would suggest that we hear testimony, and then if they need to go back and if they choose to revise and then come back with that, that's fine, but I think we need to make a decision based on what's presented this evening, which is whether to agree or disagree, uphold or not the zoning administrator's decision. Do I have that correct, Scott, in terms of procedure?
Yeah. The zoning board can vote to, you know, essentially affirm or deny the decision of the zoning administrator. It can also grant variations as part of the appeal process, but we would need a sort of an actual application in order to know what those variations are, if they would be changing from what's been presented to us.
If I may, it's already changed in that we are no longer asking for the variance on the impervious coverage. And so, I'm not sure whether that... I'm not sure how that affects us procedurally, but in any case, what the board would be deciding on is a proposal that doesn't involve all of the variants.
That proposal is not in front of us now. Right now, we have a proposal in front of us that was presented to the zoning administrator, and the issue in front of the board tonight is whether the zoning administrator was clearly erroneous in making the decision they made.
Actually...
I don't think that's correct.
No. Actually, the revised plan was submitted in the packet.
But there's no application for the leak.
But we have it in our purview to say the zoning administrator was correct in his assessment. However, we are allowing this variance based on the compliance with your non-pervious surface. I don't think that that's... I don't know where we're going, but I don't think that that's where we're going.
Okay. I mean, I think the...
But I'm saying that I think that that's in our purview.
Gotcha. All right. I think the one argument that I could reasonably make that... Because I basically think that the zoning administrator was conscientious and on the... I agree with you that on the reading of the ordinance, I think that, you know, he was... I mean, I'm probably doing myself any good to say this, but I think that it was justifiable that he ruled as he did. The one thing that I think that was sort of... I would make an argument for the rejection of what was that, based on the letter from Michael Griffith, the zoning administrator relied heavily. In fact, the letter said it was the only area of concern that he identified, not on any specific objection from neighbors who had been, you know, invited to come in and comment, but on the general feeling that, as the exact wording was, that the neighbor would feel... I have it somewhere here, but that the neighbor would feel walled in by the extra space. And we have specific... A letter from the neighbor who took the trouble to sort of testify that he doesn't in fact... Or incentured to say that he doesn't in fact feel that at all. And so, insofar as the zoning administrator relied on a hypothetical concern that doesn't correspond to reality, I think that would be the only...
I actually... I actually read... I read more into it, into the zoning administrator's reasoning than that. As I say, it's about what the zoning rules actually say and why they say it, and massing of buildings on a lot may not affect your neighbor now, but they may affect the next neighbor. And so, I think that we should kind of cut to the quick and think... If you have... I think that we've heard your arguments succinctly, and you've made very good points.
I think you have.
Yes. But I think we should probably...
Debbie, do you have anything that you would add?
My question is, do you plan on giving us another proposal that's not included in this packet? Is that your plan?
We're already pretty far into this, and having no way to charge our car at home other than an extension cord is a pretty serious ongoing discomfort. I think, given a choice between the one-car garage up and available to put our car in this winter versus going through a delay that will bring us into probably next summer before we can build anything, we're going to have to sit down and have a think about it. If the board, either through the idea of the carport or in any other way, is signaling to us that a new submission would have a good chance of success...
We'd have to see it first, sir. We couldn't say that.
Right. And that's where we are.
Scott, I have a question for Scott. Would the one-car garage that's proposed be zoning compliant? Or would it require its own variations?
We already have those variations, don't we? Because that was the proposal, the counterproposal of the zoning administrator, and he approved that in part. And so, as I understand it, the one-car garage we're proposing already stands approved by the zoning administrator.
Would the combination of variations require zoning board approval?
So if it meets the option A, that the zoning administrator approved, and she approved, just to clarify, that could be something that could be approved or was approved as part of the variation there. So that would be affirming the decision.
So we should be voting on the decision that you made?
We should get the record closed and then have our comments.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir, for your comment. Is there any neighbors here who would like to speak to this proposal? Anybody for 1009 Harvard Terrace? Thank you. Then I will officially close the record. Board, what do we say?
I like the points that Mary made. And I think you spoke articulately and made some good points, but I firmly believe, particularly with respect to the standard, that this was not the least deviation necessary, that the zoning administrator's decision was correct. That said, I'd be in favor of affirming, to the extent we need to, the zoning relief to construct the one-car garage proposal, which the applicant said they're fine with and which is a far significant, far, far significantly less deviation.
I agree that we should, we should stand with the findings of the zoning administrator and allow option A, I believe it was, as approved by the zoning administrator, as a very reasonable alternative.
Agree.
Go ahead.
No, I agree with my colleagues. Yeah. I affirm the decision by the zoning administrator and let's go with option A.
I also agree that I don't find any reason to question or challenge the process by the zoning administrator. I think I'm content with either option A or option B. And I think, as was pointed out, there probably is an option C, that if you choose to explore it, you know, could also be something that you, whether you needed to come back to us or not, I don't know what the option would be. But, but I do agree that, that the process seems to have been fat.
I agree with, with the decision by the zoning administrator. But there's also, there could be other options as well that could be proposed, obviously in a timely fashion so that you can get your project done.
That's why I'm sort of suggest, I agree with that. But what I'm suggesting is we approve option A as part of our decision tonight. And if that's not satisfactory to the applicant, then the applicant can reapply.
They can come and get.
With some plan that's concrete and that we're not trying to figure out on the fly here tonight.
I think that sounds appropriate.
Okay. Then I am going to run through the standards for this. Okay, the variance standards. Since the appeal determination is for a proposal that is within the threshold of a minor variation, the standards for minor variation should be utilized for determining the appeal. For the zoning administrator to grant approval of a minor variance, the zoning administrator must find that the proposed variances meets the following standards. A, the practical difficulty is not self-created. This standard has not been met. The property is larger than the minimum lot size for the R2 single-family residential district and contains no peculiar or unique conditions which make compliance unfeasible. Additionally, viable and compliant alternatives beyond the zoning relief offered by the administrator exist, including removal of the driveway and construction of a new alley-accessible garage with adjacent open off-street parking. Owning electric vehicles and hosting guests are a choice and not particular to any existing conditions of the subject property. B, the requested variations will not have a standard adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of adjoining properties. This standard has been met. The adjacent property owner to the west, who is closest to the request in zoning, has concurred. C, the requested variation is in keeping with the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. This standard has not been met. The comprehensive plan specifically states that the policies and programs such as zoning support a high quality of life in the neighborhoods. The required three-foot rear setback, rear yard setback is intended to provide an open space buffer between properties, which therefore reduces impacts such as noise on adjacent properties. Maximum building lot coverage and impervious surface ratios ensure a level of soil permeability for water infiltration and reduce the unwanted heat island impacts. The intent of keeping accessory structures as a minimum of 10 feet from a principal structure is primarily for fire protection, although the relationship between the structures is also an aesthetic concern. Not conforming to these requirements when not necessary as requested by the appellant is not in keeping with the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. D, the requested variation is consistent with the preservation policies set forward in the comprehensive general plan. This is not applicable. E, the requested variation requires the least deviation from applicable regulations among the feasible options identified before the zoning administrator issues her decision regarding said variation. This standard has not been met. The same-sized garage could be constructed in a compliant location accessible from the alley. Additionally, a single-car garage with adjacent open off-street parking could be constructed accessible from the alley with no zoning relief. Can someone call the motion, whether we are going to uphold the zoning administrator's decision?
I'll make a motion. I move in the matter ZBA 19ZMJV-0068 with regard to the property at 1009 Harvard Terrace, that we affirm the decision of the zoning administrator to deny the relief requested for the stacked garages, but that we approve the option presented by the zoning administrator for a one-car garage on, subject to the condition that that garage be built in substantial compliance with the documents submitted to the zoning department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we uphold your decision. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next case, 3101 Central Street. Will the respondent please approach the podium? Scott, can you read that into the record?
Yes. Lakeside Auto Rebuilders submits for major zoning relief to expand illegally non-conforming use in legally non-conforming structure. Lakeside Auto Rebuilders to construct a 580-square-foot, one-story garage bay enclosure. The applicant requests to expand illegally non-conforming use for an automobile repair service establishment and auto body repair establishment where said uses are not eligible permitted or special uses within the R4 district or active eligible active ground floor uses within the Central Street overlay district. The applicant also requests the addition of zero parking spaces where one additional parking space is required for the expansion. On this case, the zoning board of appeals makes a recommendation to the city council, who's the determining body for this case due to the parking variation. Staff and DA have reviewed this request and are recommending approval subject to conditions, notably striping of the parking lot and the addition of a buffer, landscape buffer in between the sidewalk and the asphalt parking area. Thank you.
Sir, could you state your name and address for the record?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Cullen. My name is Christopher Canning. My office is at 1000 Skokie Boulevard in Willett. I represent Lakeside Auto Rebuilders at 3101 Central Street. With me tonight, the far right, is Sarkis Tokad. He is a 47-year resident of the neighborhood at issue. He is the owner since 1975 of Lakeside Auto Rebuilders. Next to him is his son, Armin, who is the operator of Lakeside Auto Rebuilders. To put it another way, Armin's the one who does all the work and Sarkis is the pretty face. So Armin is a graduate of ETHS and he handles the day-to-day work. Before we get started, I'd like to let the chair know, we worked with Melissa and Cade on this, and they did a wonderful job working with us to get us here, because this all started when Sarkis gave me a 1987 file, which was the last time Lakeside Auto Rebuilders was here before the zoning board of appeals and the city council. And we'll talk a little bit about those conditions later on. But just wanted you to know that they did a fine job. I know you've all had a chance to go by the site, some of you maybe even have been customers in the last 30-some-odd years of Lakeside Auto Rebuilders. I know you've read my letter, so I'm not going to belabor that. What I want to focus on is the fact that this is called a major variation. To be perfectly honest, I don't really think it's a major variation. Two of the variations arise from the fact that this auto body shop here on Central Street is a non-conforming use in a non-conforming location. Nothing that Lakeside Auto can do on their property can be done without relief from those two variances. So you can say, no, you can't expand, or yes, you've been carrying on the same business for the last 44 years, just keep doing it. So two of those variations kind of go away. You either accept that they've been doing the same thing for 44 years or you reject it. Which gets us to the third variation, which is parking. Parking, as you know, is a function of the code and it's really a math problem. And as you saw from the revisions, originally, there was a need for 27 spots and we only had 21. But then Cade reread the ordinance, considered it, and now there is a need for 12 spots and we only provide 11. So we're one spot short. So unlike the other cases you've heard tonight, even though they're adding 580 square feet, there are no FAR issues here. There are no height issues, there are no impervious surface issues. The only issue is, can this business continue to do what it's been doing in the same location for 44 years, even though it has one less parking spot than is required by code? And let me tell you a little bit about parking on this site, because they are not a car wash. They're not a steady stream of cars going in. As Auto Rebuilders, as any of you who've ever had to go get your car fixed, you have to make an appointment. So they can take in as much or as little work as possible. So they control what's going on on the site. So the fact that there's one less spot than required by the ordinance, you really have to see, think about how the site operates. And we would ask for relief from that requirement to provide one more spot. Couple other things. You heard Scott mention, two items came up at the committee meeting last week. One is striping. All of you have gone by the site and know that it is not striped. Armin and Sarkis think it blends into the neighborhood better. After the meeting, Armin came up to me and we told Cade that there was at least one neighbor who would object to the striping because they like the black top to stay because it looks more residential, more in keeping with driveways that you have in a residential neighborhood. Later this evening, you're going to hear from a number of neighbors who I believe hold that same opinion. The second item is the landscape buffer. Interestingly enough, Armin and Sarkis have a different recollection of what was talked about in the meeting than what's in the staff report. Their belief was that the landscape buffer had to be at the corner of Lawndale and Central, as opposed to a buffer that would run from the curb cut on Lawndale all the way, make the right turn and go down Central.
Is there, is there a visual in the packet that you can speak to that would help us visualize that? Is this what we're looking at?
Yes. So where Scott has, where Scott has put the cursor.
Yep.
You see that there's a proposed landscape buffer, which is detailed in the lower right-hand corner. The belief being, at least from Armin and Sarkis, that we needed to provide the landscape buffer at the corner. Okay? What's in your staff report, Scott, if you could show what, what staff is recommending?
I believe staff is recommending a vegetative buffer along Central Street to separate the parking area from the pedestrian way. Is that correct?
And then turning, and then going down Lawndale to that curb cut.
Okay.
So a much larger area.
So one is intended to separate and protect pedestrians from activity on the, the surface parking lot and perhaps the other is intended to hold the corner, Scott?
Yeah. To clarify what staff's position is, it would be for the landscaping to start essentially at the curb cut on Lawndale and then wrap around to the curb cut that's existing on Central. Provides, it was a visual buffer between the asphalt that runs right up against the city sidewalk now, up to and just over the property line. It is also providing a buffer for any vehicles that are driving through this drive-out area and that could potentially trespass from that area onto the sidewalk.
So at the staff meeting, their recollection was it would only be at the corner. And then the staff report and discussions with staff indicated they, or at least my perception, they wanted something larger. So it is, it is the applicant's desire for the zoning board to make a recommendation which way they want to go with it.
And are they, I'm sorry, one additional question. Do they, are they, would they not support what is, in your view, a broader definition of the proposed vegetation that was proposed by DA?
Their preference would be to not do as much, but if it's the decision of the zoning board, there, there really is a, a conflict of remembrances of what happened at the meeting. That's probably the easiest way to put it.
So Scott, you were at that meeting, right? So your recall is, as you stated, as you just described it, is that correct?
Yes, the staff preference is for the, the more extensive landscaping.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Does the installation of the green belt along Central Street and Lawndale require the removal of concrete?
It will require the removal of some of the concrete and some of the asphalt to be able to do that, because it's going to have to be, on the Central Street side, it's going to be on the north side of the sidewalk.
Right.
So there would, there would be some removal there. And the concern of the applicant is, will it decrease the amount of space between the front of the shop and the buffer? And would it cause a disruption to the flow on the property? Because what happens, if, you can visualize the site.
Yeah.
Often you have, somebody pulls up and says, can you do an estimate? And the whole reason we're even putting this, this structure behind the plantings that are there already is to do indoor estimating.
Right.
So say one car pulls in coming from the east and then another car pulls in, you can, you can have two cars parallel in front of the shop. And the concern is, with the size of the buffer, it might get a little too close. That, that's, that's the operational concern.
And has that been, has that been measured?
That has not been measured.
Sir, wouldn't the buffer allow less intrusion from the community on the striping? You really wouldn't be able to see it so clearly if you had the buffer.
I think, I, I think you, the neighbors would be better able to speak to that because the neighbors are going to be the ones who are looking at the striping. Because the striping, as, as I understood it from the committee, would be to stripe the entire parking lot so that you could show all the exterior parking spaces. So there's a better handle of how many actual parking spaces are on the lot. From their operational standpoint, it's not necessary to do that because they line up their cars like they have every day the last 44 years. So the, the striping doesn't improve the efficiency of the operation. It's, it just makes it look more commercial, like the CVS further, further down the street on Central Street.
So you say line up your cars like they do every day. So the cars that are parked on this lot are the ones that they're working on?
Yes.
So I went by the property and I couldn't help but notice there are four cars parked in the alley behind the building.
Okay.
Are those the ones you're working on?
I believe so.
Would you like to step up to the, yeah?
My name is Armin Tokad, 232 Sunset and Wilmette. The cars behind our shop is, it's part of our property. Those are our own personal vehicles. Those cars are not.
Those are employee, that's employee parking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. But just to confirm, it's on property owned by Lakeside?
So.
Yeah, property owned by Lakeside.
Right, it's not in the alley, it's on the property line. I just wondered, were those the cars you were working on?
Sorry, so let's go back to the cars you're working on and the, and the 11 spots. So how many cars do you stage on the property at a time?
For example, in this photograph, you can see this is a live, you know, photo in the middle of the day. Normally, there could be one car right in front that's just a drive-up customer requesting an estimate. And the ones parked on the side, on average, there could be anywhere from six to nine there. On the, on the architectural drawing, it shows 12 spaces. So often, as you can see in this picture, several of those spaces are empty.
Have you ever had 12 cars on your property that you're working on at a time?
Yes, we do.
And so what do you do? And so what do you do, what, what do you do with the cars when they don't fit in the allotted space there?
I mean, several, most of the cars, all of the cars we're physically working on are inside the building. So we're not doing any work outside, obviously, but at night, for example, when we close at 5:00 p.m., they're all tucked away, where they're not visible from the street.
So is there ever, is there ever an actual need on the property for a twelfth parking space?
No.
Or between those parking spaces and the space you have inside, you can fit full capacity of anything you've got at a time?
Never have an overflow. And to speak on, for example, cars outside, customers' vehicles are never, ever left on the street, ever. That's our strict, you know, own policy.
By on the street, you mean in the lot? In your lot?
No, on, let's say, Lawndale or Central Street.
Oh, yeah.
They're never moved off our property. As several of them are dismantled, waiting for parts, waiting for insurance approval, so.
Don't you think then, so I, I'm very familiar with the property. I've been to the property several times. I've never seen any more than a few cars on that lot at a time, and it's kept, it's kept very organized and clean. But what I do think is, don't you think that that landscape buffer then would also provide you and your customers with a degree of quote-unquote "protection" from the street?
The, to be honest with you, in, in all of our existence, we've never had one issue. As a matter of fact, lots of the neighborhood kids cut through there, going to Willard School and just going to, you know, work. Like I would, to this day, we've never had an issue. I could physically show you on that photograph. Basically, now, I could physically, Chris mentioned two cars. I can fit three cars up front. Where delivery trucks come through, we take delivery of parts up front. If I put that buffer up front, that's going to shrink me down where, like, as Chris mentioned, three cars, no way are going to fit. Not that that's required, or, you know, it's, it's going to limit my, my flow on the property. And another challenge it's going to present to us is snow plowing in the winter. At this nice open layout, we push the snow, we move it away, and we keep it clean as we always do. Now we're going to have to go around, build up. Whatever we do put there, it has to look nice to the, to the neighbors and, and be attractive. The salt is going to kill it. I have, then I have salt challenges and other things. If I put rocks there that are not phased by salt, it's going to look horribly industrial. It's going to look terrible. So it's going to come along with all these challenges for us. As Chris mentioned, we'll go with it if that's a condition of our approval, but we'd prefer to, to limit that to the corner if possible. But again, we will go along with what the, the board recommends, so.
Can you speak to, I understand that the addition that's being proposed here is simply to provide an area for, it sounds like customers to wait when estimated, you know, estimating is being done. There was a letter in our packet from a nearby neighbor that spoke to, you know, odors and fumes. Can you speak to sort of operationally how you work to contain that, and whether anything that's being proposed as a part of this, you know, as a part of this plan, would impact, you know, impact that one way or another?
Sure. So the space we're proposing, if you can see on the, the west side of the building, on the left there are tall hedges.
Uh-huh.
They're just about the height of the building. That structure would be directly behind that. Nobody would physically see it. And that would be for our own personal use of estimating, not for the customer to get into it. The customer would still walk into the front door, and we have a small seating area to wait. In terms of additional fumes, noise, or production, none of that would occur, because it would be strictly for estimating purposes, which is a pen, paper, and a computer. No tools, no compressors, no paint. We have one spray booth in the shop that's OSHA and EPA compliant. It's regularly, regularly visited by the county and the state, and we're in full compliance with fumes and odor control. Naturally, it's a body shop. The doors open and close. Naturally, the honest truth is, the fumes and smell will get out. That's, unfortunately, that's just the truth of our business. We do try to contain it, and we have swi, since switched to water-based paint, which is what the car factories now use. It was mandated in California. We've adopted it just because it's safer, better for the environment. And that's what's actually on cars. We can match colors by using this water-based technology. It doesn't have much of an odor, and it's a lot safer, VOC.
And when was that change implemented?
About three years ago.
Okay.
California's mandated to do that. We did it by choice to, to match colors and to be less, you know.
Scott, I don't know if we have a picture. I'm trying to recall, sort of at that corner, does it, it's just sort of this flat surface from sidewalk to parking lot, even at the corner? Is that correct?
It is.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. It goes, you can see a little bit here, the blacktop goes straight all the way out to the sidewalk.
So I'm wondering if there's a way of sort of softening that edge in response to what was suggested by staff at DAPR, sort of softening that edge, holding that corner with some landscaping while, you know, hearing sort of the operational difficulties that might be incurred by sort of extending the landscaping, the full extent of that, of those streetways?
See, when, when I was listening to staff's discussion, the thought that came into my mind was an island. Putting something like an island on that corner. So that's what I had in mind, and I think we even talked internally. Sarkis had mentioned a long time ago, he had a sign, and I was thinking to myself, I don't like bushes on a corner for visibility purposes, but what about a tree? You know, and, and if a tree is a very common element in an island, could you do something like that? So that's why when the staff report came out about the, the planters going to the whole edge, I was thinking to myself, well, that, that wasn't what I had in mind. And we talked about it, because we were also talking about, is there another way to put plantings on that corner? In fact, we went out and took pictures at, the next morning after the committee meeting.
Has there ever been any conflict between vehicles and pedestrians, given the current configuration?
Luckily, not, not once have we ever had an issue.
So I have a question, because I'm a little confused here. You're saying that you need twelve parking spaces, but you are only providing eleven?
Correct.
So according to the, the site plan that you have, you're striping twelve plus the handicap parking space, which would make thirteen. So where am I, where'd you get the extra two?
Well, the site plan doesn't have any striping on it.
Correct.
So, because originally, when we did the site plan, staff said we needed twenty-eight spots, but we only had twenty-one spots. Then there was the revision that you needed twelve, but you only had eleven. So there hasn't been a determination of where the striping would be. The thought was that you would have, you would better clarify where the parking spots are on the lot if you had striping, to which Lakeside says, we park our cars the same place every day. For our purposes, we don't, we don't need striping.
No, I understand that, but if you're.
I think the question is on that plat that we were just looking at, the plat of topography, which is not, which is not a site plan.
Right.
But there, there are twelve spaces drawn along Central Stri, along, sorry, on the left side of the picture, right?
Right. And there are eight and a half feet in width. So.
So I guess the question is, don't you have your twelve spaces?
That's my, that's, that's where I'm a little confused. And then plus, now you have a parking, you have a handicap parking space in front of the existing shrubs that are not getting changed as well. So that would make thirteen, according to this. So who determined?
That, that would be a question for staff.
That's what I'm saying. Who determined this, Scott?
I know this was a revision that came in after the, the DAPR meeting.
It's in the packet, if you want to go look at it.
Yeah, it's, it's this one on the, on the screen here. So I don't know how closely that's been analyzed for code compliance with the drive aisle dimensions and the spaces that are shown there.
I mean, a typical parking space is nine feet wi, wide. That is the compliance plus an eighteen feet deep. So that is a typical parking space, regardless, anywhere you go. And the handicap parking space is sixteen by eighteen. So it's eleven feet plus six, plus five feet, sorry, for your handicap parking space. That's why I'm a little confused with what was presented here versus what is actually Even if you were to take one parking space completely out, you still have the handicap parking space, which is still give you the twelve. So I don't know. And then in regards to the landscaping, that, what's being shown right now, is that a planter? Or an actual, just, you're removing asphalt and creating a landscape area?
Something like a planting bed, or as I mentioned, my thought, my initial thought as I was listening to staff discussion, was an island.
Well, if you're creating an island, then you would put a curb, and then you'd put the, the planting area, that would avoid all your salting issues that you would have. If you were to create a longer island along Central Street, that would also reduce, so that's just for you, for your information, you'd be able, or if you create a, a planter, so an actual planter area, then you wouldn't have to worry about plowing and getting salt and killing the, the plants.
Well, and I apologize for interrupting. We had actually, on, on the morning after the committee meeting, went out and arranged some planters at an appropriate height, and sent that picture to the staff, and were told, no, that's not what we had in mind. Because we were thinking, if we use the, the higher planters, they wouldn't have the salt issue, but we could create that buffer there on the corner.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know what the, what was recommended, you know? And if this is a fight of, you know, what the height of, I mean, they're, you know, if we're trying to create more landscaping, there are different ways to approach it. One would be to create curbs. You'd obviously have to build them, but that would contain your, your salt issues and your plowing. You wouldn't be plowing into any of your, a, a, any of your shrubs or plantings, I guess. That's my take on it.
Scott? To get back to your question about parking, again, we rely on staff for their calculations, how they interpret the ordinance, because it's, it's the interplay between bays within the building and, and square footage, so.
I, I agree. As, as an architect, I can tell you, when you're doing a site plan, it's nine feet by eighteen feet, period, so.
And just to clarify, the, and Evanston actually are, we do allow for a little bit skinnier spaces, eight and a half by eighteen's the, the code compliance.
So then, then you, then they wouldn't be using the, they'd still comply with the twelve parking spaces that are required. So that would be one less thing that we have to look at.
Well, in which case, if the parking is off the plate, then it has, doesn't have to go to city council, right? It's just an amendment of the special uses, which is under the purview of the ZBA?
Uh, correct. Well, it, it would not be a parking variance, would not need to go to, to city council, correct? It's still a major variation for the expansion of legal non-conforming use and structure.
Special use still goes to city council, we recommend.
In this case, it's not a special use, it's a, a major variation to expand illegal non-conforming use.
Ah, so, got it.
Can I get a little clarification, Scott, as well? It appears to me as though the green belt was sort of a beautification project in consideration of granting a variance. I concur, I don't exactly see how it protects pedestrians or, it, perhaps you can clarify the thinking of, of DAPR, the zoning administrators in that regard?
Sure. So if this were, I think is the, the applicant representative is giving at, in an island, something that's curbed area, then that would both provide separation from vehicles to not exceed that curb, and then also provide aesthetic improvement to provide screening to those areas, whether it's parking areas, drive-al areas, areas that may be, may be striped. And, and then additionally, it's about thirty-five feet between the front of the building and the, and the sidewalk or property line here. Parking's not allowed in this location, so a, you know, twenty-four-foot drive aisle would certainly leave plenty of room for additional landscaping in that area.
So I have other questions. I want to talk about the fact that in my packet, they showed ordinance twenty-seven dash O dash eighty-seven, that said in nineteen eighty-seven, they asked you to do some of the changes that would alleviate some of the things that these letters that have been coming in from your community. They asked you to do something about the paint fumes, and they also asked you to limit the use. So the, the use has always been parking. And I don't know that you could speak to this. This is nineteen eighty-seven, probably your father. Have, were any of these changes made? They were put in by ordinance? I just have a question.
If you read through the changes, one of the stipulations was to put in a spray booth.
Yeah.
Back then, several shops didn't have spray booths. Some still actually don't, but we're, that's besides the point.
Are you do, do you have a spray booth now?
Yes, ma'am.
You do?
This is regular, regularly inspected by the state and Cook County. Without that, we wouldn't have our business license.
Okay, so, but there's still smells.
My, my idea is that we ask something of the city. Unfortunately, there are some people that oppose that, and they, they use some tools to, to favor their opinion. That's my opinion. I, we never have regular complaints of smells, and I, I think the city can speak on that. There, there were two emails that expressed concern. One of them is a less-than-two-year resident, a Blackaway. And the other one is a friend of a neighbor. If you read through the, the two opposing emails, one is a friend of a friend that lives down the street that supposedly the kids smell it, so.
I couldn't help but notice that the, I didn't know who they were that wrote in those emails, but they were all behind your shop to the north. So everybody that supported this was south of your shop. So is that where the spray booth is, in the back?
Uh, yes, it's in the back of the shop.
Right. And it was directly, and it directly, sir, would you like to approach and talk about that? Yeah, to the north is where all the complaints came from. The, the letters from the south were all in support. I just noticed that.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
So you did address this ordinance in nineteen eighty-seven and go through here point by point? You did.
We, we since installed the spray booth. The filters are regularly replaced, and we don't have issues. There are two people that, that wrote an email since we've applied for this, because everybody got a postcard in the mail that said, major variation. It struck fear in the neighborhood as, as it would naturally, and that's where these ideas came from.
Okay. Sir, were you going to speak to it?
I'm Sarkis Tokat. I own the Lakeside Auto and operated forty-some years. Now my son is operating, and I live nearby. Nineteen eighty-seven, I came with my choice to put a spray booth. The helping the environment and also the neighborhood. When city gave me the permission to operate it and that location, nineteen seventy-five, all I had is just a fireproof curtain and a garage and a one fan. But unfortunately, it went in a different direction. I don't want to go through with that, because it was ugly, and my part of it, I don't want to even remember. I was crucified. And we did our best, fighting with the city, abort, or going to the court, get a permit. There was nothing in the books. They can show me here what I'm going to do. They go, they went day by day. This is back in eighty-seven.
Yes.
I respect you people here and operating totally different fashion, coming with a different group, submitting our plan, and then now we're here. Now we're going probably to the city council, which is totally different. I mean, we achieved lots of things. And we did our best in following industry, the changes and all that. We're certified that any, say, wastes, whatever, through Illinois, which we've been accused in the past, like dumping on the alleyway or whatever, nothing was proved. OSHA and EPA was sent to our property, which I never heard anybody got visited in my type of business, in this neighborhood or any neighborhood, say, Skokke or Wilmette. But we're doing like my son said. It was, the technologies are different today. There is no lacquer paint with the. is no lacquer paint with the, you know, different chemicals in it. Now, he changed it three years ago, that was again, our choice, we're doing our best to operate. And in the meantime, we're supporting eight, nine families through that business. I have employees working for me since 1985. And unfortunately, I'm not planning to go any other place, and then city can offer me any other place, we don't have any industrial park or anything. And I, I've been living in this country, in Evanston, 47 years, since I moved to this country, and I'm not going to move. So what we're asking is, I don't know, it's a 10,000 square foot lot, of course, by the rules and all that, the parking spots and all that, that's your rules and all that, we honor that. Again, we go day by day, sometimes we're booked the whole month, we can get more cars, we don't have the capacity to do the work. I can't get 20 cars painted in one day, no way, I have only one spray booth.
Gotcha. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, I have two questions, one is for the applicant, one is for Scott. So is it your testimony that you are compliant with the 1987 ordinance and the points that were laid out in that ordinance? And to Scott, are there any, any violations that the city is aware of against this business?
I, I do not believe we're aware of any, any violations of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing, when Sarkis first came to see me, he gave me the file from 1987, which ironically, I turned over to Melissa, so the city law department would also have a copy of everything from 1987. What had happened was back in 1985, they received notice that in two years, their entire building was going to go away. It was actually December 2nd, 1985, for your Bear fans, well, remember that's the night the Dolphins beat the Bears in 1985, the only loss. So it seemed, I read that, I'm like, I remember that game. In 1987, the ordinance that you talked about was the resolution of the decision that they can keep operating it as long as they comply with those conditions, including having a family member continue to operate the business, and they have family members here. Also, in the file, there's a discussion involving the city in 1990, that they needed to, that Lakeside had to have a spray booth in place, I believe it was April 1990, if they did not, within six months, the 1987 ordinance would be null and void. So that's when the spray booth was put in, per the direction of the city council. So it has been functioning there, in that location, for almost 30 years. The changes that Armin has talked about is how they're trying to keep up with the industry standards. So, and we're perfectly in agreement that those 1987 conditions be incorporated into whatever the new ordinance would be, the 2019 ordinance.
Thank you. Have you concluded your testimony?
I have, I believe there's a number of neighbors who'd like to speak in favor of the application.
I believe there are neighbors here, let me just ask my board if you have any more questions for this respondent. No more questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna ask any neighbors that would like to speak, to please come up to the microphone, form a line, we are limited to three minutes, it's getting very late, we've got two more cases on the dock, on the docket, if someone says what you wanted to say, just say, I agree with the person before me, and have a seat. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Derek Blakely, I live at the 3110 Central Street. And I think this may be a historic moment in the history of the board, because I don't know if you've ever had three homeowners come before you and say how much they enjoy living across from an auto body shop. And I think that tells you something about Lakeside Auto Repair, it's not an ordinary body shop, and the operators are not ordinary businessmen. They run their business in a way that's extremely sensitive to the needs of the neighborhood, and they do that because they themselves are neighbors. Not only are they very good at what they do, they offer a great service at reasonable prices, extraordinary customer service, but I could not imagine better neighbors, and I have lived across the street from this business for 15 years. Many of you perhaps have driven by the location after hours, you've seen for yourselves, there's no jumble of crumpled cars ever, the worst damaged cars are put in the rear of the lot in the least visible spots, and often behind a row of hedges. Their aim is to blend into the neighborhood, which they successfully do, as a small volume, high-quality operation, all of which makes it easy for me to strongly support their request for a zoning permit for a modest addition to their property. At the same time, I want to object to the demand that's being made, or the request that's being made, that stripes be added to the parking lot. That would detract from what the Tocats are trying to do with their business, and what the neighbors desire, including myself, and that is for their business to blend into the residential surroundings. Given the low-volume nature of their operation, there's no need to mark parking spaces, they're not running a Walmart. And again, those stripes would make the property stand out as a commercial outpost, and that's something that they want to avoid, and so do we as neighbors. Evanston can be a tough place for a small business to operate. I fervently hope that you'll approve the Tocats' request for their modest building addition, and also ask that they not stripe their lot. We want their small cottage-like business to continue to offer a valuable service while retaining a low-key presence in the neighborhood. And I can also say as a neighbor, I understand the landscaping request, but it sounds somewhat like a solution in search of a problem. There's not a high volume of pedestrians on that street, and I think the business functions very well, and is very appealing as a neighbor as it currently stands. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Before another neighbor speaks, I would like to say that Scott has asked me to tell the group that we, because of the parking issue being so different from the proposal, that it's not the correct amount of space, is that we're going to have to resubmit and continue this until next time.
Can you clarify that?
Sure, I'm still doing a little bit of research on the parking, but as indicated in the, the staff report, if 12 are required, and if, if 13 are, are shown, as noted, a parking variation would not be needed. In that case, the zoning board would become the determining body instead of a recommending body. And as you recall, a couple meetings ago, this issue came up when the 2211 Maple Project came the first time. In that case, it was continued as well for it to be re-noticed, for the zoning board to be the determining body.
I understand the issue of notice, but given the fact that a month will elapse before the next, before we meet again, are you saying legally, they, we cannot find on the other, you know, find with the exception of parking, so that, you know, that the case can move forward if, if allowed to do so, given that, you know, the parking is on-site, et cetera?
That was the interpretation of our corporation counsel for the, the last case, obviously they're not, not here tonight, and I haven't had a chance to check with them on that, but that had to do with the notice, ZBA being a recommending body versus determining body. I would imagine this would be very similar if the zoning board was again, the determining body instead of the recommending body as it was noticed. Yes.
So we can finish hearing comments from neighbors and keep the case open, so that these matters can be worked out until our next notice zoning board?
Correct. Would also allow for the landscaping issue and the buffer issue to be dealt with a little bit further, if, if the zoning board becomes a determining body, that could then be worked out.
Sorry, I just, I want to make sure I understand. So there, there are three issues in front of us, right? And one of them's the parking. So you're saying if the parking issue goes away, then we become the determining body on the other two, rather than the recommending body?
That's correct.
And, and we can't make a determination tonight, because it wasn't proper, it wasn't noticed that way?
Correct, at least that, that was the opinion on a, a similar case where that, that had been the issue.
So for the applicant, then that would make, they would not have to go to city council?
Yeah, if we were able to anal, take a look at this and make sure that the, the parking is, variation's not needed for parking, then there would be no need to go to city council.
And if a variation is needed for parking for some reason?
In that case, it, it would, would need to go to city councils, that would be a, a delay, and do apologize for that. But if it's, as shown here in the zoning analysis, that 12 spaces are required, and that, and the site plan is shown, 13 spaces are there, that would, that would mean applicant meets the park.
Who compiled the site plan?
The architect prepared the site plan.
So it's, you have fairly good confidence that it's pretty accurate?
Babe Roberts is based in Evanston, so he's been before you, I'm confident that that's.
So, so that's, so we can hear the neighbors and make quick work of this at the next ZBA meeting, perhaps?
Well, I was wondering, for the chair, could everybody who's here, you take their testimony, keep it in the record, so they don't have to come back another time?
Definitely, we'll take their testimony, we'll just ask that they be as brief as possible because of the late hour. And then what, are we continuing or not?
That would be the recommendation, yeah, to take testimony and then continue it to date certain.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the matter.
Laura Mills, I live at 2620 Lawndale, which is directly north of the body shop. I support the, the variance that they're asking for. And I would note that I live in that, the northern area where they, they're receiving some complaints now about fumes, but I have not had a problem with that.
Do you live directly behind?
Directly behind, right across the alley, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I did used to smell more than I have recently. My, my biggest concern when I got the notification was the parking situation, because it sounded like they might end up with less parking, and I was concerned that people might end up parking out on Lawndale, but that doesn't sound like it's an issue, so I'm in support of what they proposed.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, could you state your name and address?
I'm Marianda Tooki, I live at 3106 Hartzell Street, directly in back. And in fact, in 1990, I was one of the people who was opposing the putting in of the more painting, because at that time, there was a smell. And, but as of late, in the last few years, there has not been any, any smell there. And I'm also here to opposing the putting in of lines in the, in their, on their asphalt. If you look at the way they've maintained the building itself, it almost looks a little bit like a cottage, and they have plantings directly in front of the building itself. And again, that, that to me is much more aesthetically pleasing than would be things, barriers, or whatever, you have a straight line, and the asphalt is, is kept in very good condition. So I, I think they should be permitted to continue and, and to go along as they have permitted, especially since, you know, they've nicely moved to the water-based paint and the rest of it, they're very good neighbors.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Charles W. Cross, I live at 3106 Central Street, I am directly south of the property. I've lived, we have lived there for 12 years, they have been the best of neighbors, I am speaking in support of this, I believe that the construction of the garage will actually remove more of their, any activity of their estimating, because that will, the estimating and evaluation of cars will be done in the garage. Because I have a background, both as a products liability attorney and a, some industrial background many years ago, I'm very familiar with the noises and odors of the industry, and in 12 years, I have never noticed, I've never, never noticed anything. I'm further opposed to the striping, because Mr. Blakely expressed that very well, that in fact, they're not, it's gonna make that, that place look like Walmart. Further, I think the landscape barrier, the damage that's going to be done to that landscape barrier is going to be done by the snowplows from the city of Evanston, because in our property, as soon as we clean our sidewalks, we have, and the plow trucks comes back by, we have solid snow all over the property. So these folks are going to be incessantly replacing landscaping, which is totally, you know, totally unnecessary. So we're in support, but we think that the additions, the additional suggestions and recommendations are, are not appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Don Brown, I live at 3108 Central, next door to Mr. Cross, next door to Mr. Blakely, in other words, between them. And I will not belabor the points that they made, they spoke them very well, I'm fully in favor of granting, that you grant the opportunity for this business, which is an excellent neighbor, to continue doing what it has done for the last 15 years that we have lived there, and we have never had a complaint. I would like to add, however, on the striping issue, I fully agree, and I fully agree that the idea of having a green space along Central Street would not function for the reasons that have been described, but also for the fact that some of the wonderful things this neighbor, this corporation does, with regard, for example, allowing the people who set up for the parade, Evanston's 4th of July Parade every year, on that property, would be materially affected by the fact that there was a, a row of bushes, or plants, or anything else that was there. Second of all, they've also been nice enough to give their property to youth groups for car washes. And they don't get anything out of this, of course, but they are contributing to our community and how our community functions. So I really believe that the striping is totally unnecessary, they're, they're not pulling in people that go in and come out after buying something, it's not a store. You heard the way they operate, they operate very effectively and efficiently, and they are very, very conscious about how they leave their property, and you heard the previous woman mention that it looks like a cottage, which it certainly does, we look directly at it all the time.
Can I ask you just one?
Thank you.
Question? Do you think that the corner, you know, a little green belt right at the corner might be appropriate, which they have indicated they'd be willing to do?
Well, it, it would be appropriate, but I can tell you that, as described, they, they have large pots that are four feet high, that are in front of the property right now, and are very attractive, and they're full of beautiful plantings right now. And they, what they did was roll those over to the corner, as Armin has shown us, this is what this would be, look like. And it, it doesn't look as pretty as having these pots against a building, quite frankly. And I don't think that it, it would effectively do anything, because they keep, the asphalt is, is well-preserved, it's always blackened, it's, it's very attractive. And I, I really don't believe that even on the corner, I mean, I could see that it would be attractive, but it's not any more attractive than what they have going on now.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, and good evening, my name is Gerald Rowling, and I live at 3029 Central, I am the homeowner, and I already have a letter on file, but I ask for just a minute to amplify that letter a little bit. I'm retired, I made my living at the study and analysis of transportation and logistics industries, and I saw many times, on many scales, how intrusive transportation or logistics enterprise can be. And I have written in my letter, I've commended this enterprise for the cleanliness and the spotlessness of the appearance. If I didn't make the effort, I might hardly know that Lakeside was there. And so I suggest, I recommend that the city take the immediate condition and appearance of the property into account when they're deliberating in the future. And the last thing is, since it just came up in my mind, listening to the discussion, I am not convinced that the introduction of striping and/or any further vegetation is advantageous, because it occurs to me now that this might attract the people who are driving up and down Central Street who have no other business, because they will see it, and it will be a distraction to them. And I think that too should be taken into account. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we are going to continue this until the next meeting, thank you for your presentation. I don't know if we're gonna get in. I don't know if we're going to get it on the next meeting. Okay, I'm going to let you give your remarks, but you need to see Melissa after this, and I don't know what agenda you'll be on.
Would we ta, I'm sorry, would we take closing remarks if the case is staying open?
I actually, I have a proposal. So, we're here, we've heard everything. If, if, if this is wrong, and they need 11 spots, then we're going to come back here in a month, have to make that recommendation to City Council, and then they're going to have to go to City Council, the next City Council meeting after that. Why don't we provisionally rule on what's in front of us tonight? And if it doesn't need to go to City Council, it will be re-noticed, and we'll decide it next time anyway. But if this is wrong, and they do need the recommendation, then at least they can go to City Council at the next meeting from now, and move the project forward.
If I may be heard?
Yes, sir.
So, what Melissa had written me in terms of what she thought the process is going to be, and this goes to your point, is that we would be on the, assuming a positive recommendation this evening, we would be on the agenda for the City Council on the 23rd of September for introduction, and October 14th for final determination.
Oh, so maybe it doesn't matter.
But, but if I read your agenda that you published at the beginning of the year, next zoning board meeting would be on the 17th of September, Tuesday, 17th.
Correct.
So assuming that we would be new business on that agenda, because we're, I assume we would move to table this until the next meeting, and remove it from the table at that meeting.
You'd be first on the agenda, next, the next meeting we could get you on.
And if you, if you made the final determination. We would have a determination done by the 17th of September.
Commissioner McCully asked if we had enough time to notice, Scott?
I think we'll have to sort that out. I believe the newspaper notice has already gone out for that, because we do have such a late meeting in August this time, so we don't have the full month until the September 17th meeting. So honestly, we'll have to sort out what the parking situation is, whether there's a variance or not, and then whether that requires re-notice on the issue.
Well, that's, that's sort of my point, right? Like, if it doesn't require re-notice, then it's because we could have decided tonight on what to recommend to City Council. So I think what I'm suggesting is, let's, this, let's provisionally decide on this, and if it turns out the parking isn't an issue, and we need to decide it, then we can come back at the next meeting and quickly decide it, with the record already having been closed.
That's the question for notice.
Yeah, without reviewing it with our.
It still needs to be re-noticed.
Yeah.
Right, but then at least, but, but if the issue is, it doesn't need to be re-notice because they do need the 11 spaces instead of 12, if there's some miscalculation or something here, at least we will have moved it forward, and they can go to City Council September 23rd, or whenever that notice needs to occur, instead of waiting for us to realize September 17th, that oops, we did need to send it to City Council, now there's only six days left.
Right, I think at this point, we're just not confident on what that parking number is, and whether there's a variation needed or not. So I'm not all that comfortable with the zoning board making a recommendation for something that we're not sure is a variation or not, and then what that, that number is.
Well, we were told by zoning staff that they have, that they are putting forth a plan for 11 spaces. And in my view, I can, I can think through that, and, and say, I, I can go through the standards for a recommendation and say, I would recommend we grant, that we recommend that City Council grant that relief based on the standards. If it turns out the plan is actually different, and they don't need 11, then it wouldn't go to City Council, it will come right back here with a proper re-notice, and we would decide on the other two issues without having to deal with the parking.
Yeah, I guess ultimately looking at it, if the zoning board's comfortable making a recommendation for a parking variance, the number of spaces that are being requested by the applicant is determined by the site plan the applicant presents. So the applicant were to present a site plan with 11 spaces instead of the 13 spaces.
But this seems like it was, this seems like, this isn't something that was, this seems like it's just a mistake that was made somewhere, right? Like, someone didn't, either didn't see this? Is this brand-new for this meeting? Or is this, or is this?
This was created after, this was created after the DAPR meeting?
Yeah, so the, one solution would be for the applicant to revise the site plan to show 11 parking spaces, and then that would meet what was noticed for the parking requirement. And a variation would still be needed, because they'd have 11 parking spaces instead of 13, if the applicant.
But, but let me address that point. Right, if we're already showing 13, 12 plus a handicap, why would we reduce it to 11 and ask for a variance?
Right, so if you want it to be continued and re-noticed, then, then we would do that. If you're still seeking a variance, then this board would be making a recommendation on the variance tonight.
Here's, here's, here's the way I view this situation. Regardless of how many spots are numbered on the drawing, that's the finite space that they have and use, and it's not striped in reality, and they fit those cars there, and it fits their business, and they're adding an indoor space where they can do what they're currently doing outdoors. So nothing about the business, or how many cars need to be parked, is actually changing. The building that they're adding is so that they can expand what their business capabilities are, but the number of cars isn't going to change. The only reason we're considering the parking issue is because that building supposedly requires a 12th space, which they apparently have. But I'm able to, I know I can consider a proposal for 11, and go through that same analysis and say, nothing about what they're doing is changing, they don't need, they don't physically need more space, and therefore, for all the reasons we would normally go through a variation, it would comply if they were proposing 11.
And, and I see it as the new building being the 14th parking space.
What does that mean?
The new bay.
The new bay would be, because they're not doing any work, it's only being used to, to estimate, I would consider that the 14th parking space.
So you're saying a function that used to happen on the lot is now happening under that new space?
Correct.
And to get to a point I believe you raised, on the site plan drawn up April 21st, so the first site plan submitted to the city shows the same 12 parking spots along the west side, the 13th, albeit identified as number 16, the handicap spot. So there's always been more than required numbers. What, what changed in the drawing you see up there was, there were three parking spots on the south edge, those were taken out when the committee said, this is where you should put the discussion about the planters. So there's always been 12 parking spots on the west side.
Right, so I think like, if we were going through some kind of vari, variation analysis here, that, the, the point would be, it doesn't matter how many numbers you draw on the drawing, there is space for more than 11 cars, and therefore.
Yes.
We would, I, I would view that as, we recommend to grant the relief sought. But I think the issue we're dealing with right now is just a kind of a procedural quagmire, right? Like, it wasn't properly noticed, so what do we do with it tonight?
In some regards, you might elect for us to send this to City Council in the event that we don't have enough time to re-notice for the September 17th ZBA meeting, and then proceed to those two meetings, you know, introduction and final. Or you may elect to see if we have enough time to re-notice, and come back on the 17th.
Well, my gut feeling, like Scott's, is there might not be enough time due to the late meeting, which would mean that we'd be on the October agenda, and if we had to go to the City Council, it would be November for introduction, and December for approval.
Right.
So to, whatever could be done the quickest would be the best, because then they can start to go out to bid for materials. It'd be great if they could start to work before winter.
Right.
This gives us an opportunity to do so.
Right, so I.
Move forward with the standards.
Yeah, move forward with the standards, and.
Let's do it. Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Closed testimony, anybody's feelings?
But so, I mean, so it's clear, what we're considering is a proposal for a variation that only requires 11 spaces on the existing lot. And so I just re, I would, in the comment section, reiterate what I just said. All they are proposing to do is add an indoor bay to do exactly what it is they're currently doing outdoors. Nothing about the parking needs changes. The testimony is that they have plenty of outdoor spaces to store the cars. We're not talking about customer parking, like at a store, we're talking about spaces that are used to store vehicles that are being worked on, and the space they have is adequate. And it appears there may be more than 11, but regardless of how many you number, I believe that the standards for a variation on that are, are met, and don't change because of the addition.
Scott, my concern with that, however, is I think that we need to make a motion that is consistent with the notice that went out for City Council. So I think that in our motion, we need to recommend that City Council approve the variance for parking?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, okay.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, I think the standards are met, because I don't think there's an actual need for an actual quote-unquote 12th space.
Okay.
And to the extent there is a need, it's being met, so I don't, I don't think any deviation, actual deviation is required.
Correct, but we want to be consistent in our motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just to write a little more clarification, and again, apologies for the communication on this, I'm receiving some additional information from staff that some of the spaces shown on the site plan are not legal parking spaces, and so that's why, although 13 are shown, 13 spaces do not meet the code requirement for parking. So you would still be making a, consider, considering a recommendation for variance for parking. So all the, all the more reason why we should make our recommendation tonight.
Okay, let's rip through the standards before anybody disagrees with that. Okay, for a variation to be recommended for approval, the ZBA must find that the proposed variation, one, will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values.
Sorry, can we go back to the, our discussion?
We can.
Because I think, I think we need to understand whether what we're proposing involves striping or not. It seems fairly unanimously that nobody wants it, except whoever, perhaps, DAPR.
That, that's only a function of what we recommend to City Council.
Right.
So we can recommend that.
So the question is, is that a condition we're recommending or not?
No.
Okay.
We're recommending that they not stripe it.
Okay.
Can I go now?
Uh, no, I think we also ought to discuss the landscape issue.
Okay.
I, I kind of, uh. I, just to distinguish between the, the two owners, I've listened to what Armin had to say about the practical needs on that, on the Central Street side, and I think it's, would not be practical to add landscaping along, along that edge. I do think the corner landscaping could be nice, and perhaps if staff and City Council still feel that's necessary, I'd be okay with that condition. But it seems like, one, destroying the concrete in order to put in landscaping that would suffer from snow plowing and salt is probably, as it was well put by the first neighbor, maybe finding a solution that doesn't have a problem.
I agree.
Staff like to talk to that, because I agree.
Sure, again, we'd support having landscaping as both a visual buffer and a physical buffer between the asphalt and the sidewalk. Directly west of this property, also residentially zoned properties, there's landscaping right up against the sidewalk in those areas as well.
But not a large asphalt lot that needs to be plowed next to it.
It's true, it would take some consideration for the, the snow clearance on the private property.
Well, I personally also think that there was a willingness on the part of the business owners and their representative to add a landscaping buffer at the corner, which I think that that accent, you know, you brought the planters up to show the neighbors, I don't think that it would preclude having planters in front of the building, but I think that it would beautify that parcel, to have just the corner, some kind of a planting bed in the corner. So I would be, I would include that in the motion.
I think that's a good idea. And to the point of the 19, the provisions under the 1987 ordinance, I recall I was trying to find in the DAPR recommendation, so are they all being taken wholesale? Because the DAPR report sort of picked, chose, I think, you know, a select number of them.
The DAPR report reiterated those items that are still relevant, and Scott's got those.
I have a copy of it here, if you want to read it.
I, I have them because Mary printed them.
Comments, comments? Further comments, Mona? Okay, I agree. I agree with you, Scott. Can we go through standards now?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Number one, will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of the adjoining properties. The business has been located at 3101 Central since the 1970s, and the property has been in auto-related use originally as service station since the 1920s. The proposed addition will not expand services, number of employees, or hours of operation. The proposed addition will likely mitigate any adverse impact on adjoining properties by internalizing the business's estimating service, reducing impacts such as noise on any adjoining properties. The proposed addition will also be screened with vegetation. Okay, so we're not talking about that anymore. Staff further recommends that condition number four contained in the ordinance 27087 to be repeated to ensure that paint fumes emanating from the premises are adequately mitigated. And condition number four is, equipment to control paint fumes emanating from the premises shall be installed and maintained by the applicant and any successor in interest authorized under condition five below, and such equipment shall comply with the requirements of the Building Department, the Fire Department, and the Federal and Illinois Environmental Protection Agency standards. Okay, number two, is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. The proposed addition, a retention of a longtime Evanston business promotes objectives of the comprehensive general plan, as well as enhances and maintains the taxable value of this property. The number of parking spaces, which we are not going to talk about, due to its location and small lot size, all services are rendered by appointment only. There is no long-term storage of vehicles on the site, and the majority of the existing parking spaces remain vacant. The principal intentions of Section 666-64-4 and 6-6-4-5 is to encourage and facilitate the conversion of non-conforming uses in transition areas. However, due to potential environmental constraints on the site, owed to its past as an oil and gas service station, extensive remediation is probable, and the lot would likely remain vacant until remediation efforts could deter, could occur, particularly a residential use if the existent automotive use were to expire. Additionally, the addition is the smallest possible expansion of the existing nonconformity in order to permit the applicant to operate their businesses more efficiently and effectively. Staff further recommends that conditions one, two, and four contained in the ordinance 27-0-87 be repeated to safeguard further transition of the subject property and use therein. So the conditions one, two, and four, number one, is in the event the subject building on the subject property is either A, damaged by fire, or B, removed from the premises, the variations granted herein shall terminate. Number two, the use of the subject building shall be limited to a public garage, including body repair and painting. And number four, equipment to control paint fumes emanating from the premises shall be installed and maintained by the applicant. Okay, number three, has a hardship or practical difficulty that is peculiar to the property. The existing lot size was platted and the existing building constructed prior to the current ownership. The site has operated as a service station since the 1920s, and has been legally nonconforming since 1985. Due to the existing size of the lot, the applicant has no feasible way of providing additional parking. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. Without the requested zoning relief, the applicant would either continue to operate inefficiently in inclement weather, or would relocate. In order to meet the minimum parking requirements, extensive alterations would have to occur to the existing building to reduce its footprint. Number five, is not based exclusively on a desire to extract additional income from the property or public benefit to the hole will be derived. The proposed addition will not increase the amount of business that the applicant receives, and will not generate additional income. The addition will simply provide a sheltered space to facilitate the existing estimating service, which currently operates in the parking lot. Number six, does not have a hardship or practical difficulty that was created by any person having an interest in the property. The property was platted at its size and width prior to the current ownership. Additionally, the existing business opened in 1975. Additionally, the existing business opened in 1975, prior to the use becoming nonconforming. And finally, number seven, is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty. The addition is the minimum size requirement, required to provide efficient indoor space for estimating service. Would somebody like to call the motion?
I'll make a motion in the matter ZBA 19ZMJV-0076 with regard to the property at 3101 Central Street that we recommend to City Council to grant or approve the major zoning relief requested to expand the legally nonconforming use and legally nonconforming structure of this property with the following, with no additional parking spaces required on the conditions that the corner, property corner include some form of landscaping beautification, but not to expand down Central Street, that there not be any striping required, and third, that the conditions from the 1987 ordinance that are still relevant, as called out by DAPR, be carried forward in a new ordinance that would apply to the relief requested, and that the property otherwise be developed in accordance with the testimony and documents submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Passed on. See staff about the parking. All right, I have a couple of questions. If you people could please move out quietly, I want to ask the remaining people in the audience, how many people are here for 1245 Hartree? Okay, how many people are here for Wade? Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to make an adjustment to the agenda, and we are going to hear 2412 Wade Street first. Can we have the respondent?
Why? Can I ask the question why we're doing that?
It's very late, and we have very many people that want to speak to that. We have two people that want to speak to Hartree.
So given that this is what was noticed and put in the material, and we also have the applicant for Hartree, I'm not sure that that's appropriate. If we have concern whether we're going to get to the Wade...
We do have concern.
...case this evening, then we should be honest as to whether we think we're going to be able to hear that case so that the people that came out don't continue to wait. But I don't think it's appropriate to bump the order of the agenda items.
We were just switching them around just to make sure that everybody got an opportunity to speak that was here, that's been here since 7:00.
But we also have applicants from the Hartree Avenue case, so...
We do. We have a respondent.
I don't think it's appropriate to bump items. I don't think we have precedent for that, so I would oppose doing so.
We've done that several times. However, however, it's up to the board.
May we ask the Hartree contingent if they would concede to let the group of neighbors have their say?
Oh, no, we plan to hear you tonight. Okay, so if everybody on the board wants to go ahead with the agenda as planned, why don't you step up to the podium? Scott, could you read it into the record?
Sure. 1245 Hartree Avenue. Becky Trisco and Megan Tower, potential SEs, submit for special uses for daycare center, domestic animal, and kennel for Unleashed in Evanston in the I-2 General Industrial District. The ZBA makes a recommendation to the City Council, who's the determining body for this case and the special use. This has been reviewed by DAPR, and staff in DAPR are recommending approval. Thank you.
Okay, please make your proposal.
Hi, we do have one change that requested from DAPR that we're passing out now.
Okay, this will be noted as exhibit one for this case.
Okay, my name is Becky Trisco. This is my business partner, Megan Tower. We currently run Unleashed in Evanston, a dog daycare and facility at 1908 Greenwood, and we've submitted a special use application to open a second facility, which we will call Unleashed Academy, at 2000 Dumpster Street, Suite A, to expand our current daycare and training services and add overnight boarding. I do want to make one clarification, that the application was originally submitted of the address 1245 Hartree. It's the same building, but the entrance that we are using is in the back, which is actually the 2000 Dumpster Street address and parking lot. And if we pull up our site plan, there's one very similar to this in there that clarifies where our entrance will be, and so we will actually be using the address 2000 Dumpster Street. The proposed facility will be open for daycare Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and also hold training classes on evening and weekends. And then when we have dogs boarding overnight, we'll have a staff member present at all times. There are additional, you know, details I have, but you have that all in front of you, and I'll keep it short. So we appreciate your consideration, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions from the board?
So not that long ago, Evanston Township High School came before us to locate an off-site school for some of their students at this location, and they seem to be contiguous to your space. They're not contiguous to it?
They're not. There is a buffer. If I had a pointer, I could show you, but...
There is a pointer.
So one of the plans there of the building seem to show that ETHS, the ETHS classrooms or administrative rooms were almost immediately adjacent to this. Can you identify yourself?
Could you say it in the mic, please, sir, so we can pick it up?
I'm Reed Beidler. I'm the landlord.
Okay, well, that's...
So I was here with ETHS and...
Yeah, so that's very helpful, because it's precisely questions about the facility itself that I have with regard to sound abatement. My experience with dog daycare facilities is that they were enormously loud, and I had neighbors across the alley complaining, we're talking about a different neighborhood altogether. So ETHS therefore is not, it looks as though they're right there next to space A, the 1135 square feet.
I would love to. Here.
Oh, I see, there is a buffer there. So what is that buffer?
It's some additional space that is for rent. I'm talking to various warehousing, people who want to use it for warehousing and storage.
Right, right.
But there's about 12,000 feet of space between the Unleashed space and the ETHS space.
Okay. And the, is that a hallway what is to the left of space A, or are those the individual kennels?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
So space A, space A, the 9,000...
Goes to about right here. So this is all additional, and this is, this actually is not part of ETHS.
Okay.
There are spaces here. And this space and this 20,000 contiguous space is being looked at by a potential warehousing tenant, and that's frankly what the space will probably end up being. It has loading docks.
Okay.
It's, you know, it's an industrial, you know, light industrial user.
So, I mean, obviously, I trust that you would not want to put dog daycare into a location that would create a huge noise disturbance for your other tenants. So there's adequate buffers on all sides.
Actually, it's almost perfect, because it's, and the exterior or the outside exercise area for the dogs is actually back in the back in an area that's also used by a...
A bakery.
No, it's actually not. It's actually a material handling business. So they've got dump trucks, and, I mean, it's about as good a location as there could be. My office is closer to this than ETHS or the bakery.
Okay, because they had said that their exercise yard was behind Sugar &amp; Spice, so that's why I was confused.
Well, Sugar &amp; Spice is right here.
Oh, so that was just incorrect.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, I just...
And my office is right here.
Those were my concerns immediately upon seeing ETHS and then Sugar &amp; Spice and imagining the dogs, you know.
No, no, no.
I've had the experience, so that's why I ask.
Sir, has tapes unlimited moved?
They're in the process of moving out now.
That's not who's in that buffer zone.
This, the space they're taking is former tape space, a part of the former tape space.
The space that these people are taking?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Does your project include any sound control measures?
Yes, we are planning on, if you go back to the, sorry, I don't, actually didn't think we saw that one yet, but there is a site plan of the actual layout, proposed layout of the facility in there somewhere. Yeah, right there. So we are planning on doing extra soundproofing and a drop ceiling where all the kennels are, and then also in the group boarding area, which, where there would be dogs overnight. So all those walls, we're planning on soundproofing within the facility.
So how will people access this? Are they giving their pets by dropping off, or it's for a longer time? Do you have a drop-off?
Yeah, so if you go back to the parking site plan again, the entrance will be right where the number three is. So you will go in, that's back by the parking lot, back where Temperance is. So you go back there, and then those spaces right there will be designated for people who are dropping off their dogs and picking up, and they'll pick up and drop off back there. And then we will have, I mean, it'll mostly be pick-up and drop-off, whether the dogs are just staying for the day or overnight. We will also have some training classes where people will come in for an hour-long class or so.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Where are employees parking?
So in that lot, if there, and if there, we also are, you know, the employees can also park over in the West Hartree lots if necessary, but we did provide a summary of like the total number of spots, and I think there was, if you total all the three lots, there were 342 parking spaces. The current businesses that are operating there, they're, those employees take up approximately 178 spaces each day, which leaves the net parking available for visitors and guests to the building at 164. We think the max that we would ever use for employees and visitors would be 12 spaces. That would be, you know, with a very full training class, basically. So those six spaces right there would be designated for pick-up and drop-off visitors or guests, and then the employees would either park in that lot with available spaces or in the Hartree lots if necessary.
So my dog is a customer of your current location, and I can attest to the market demand, because we were on the waiting list for six months, so I'm grateful that he's there, and I have heard a lot of good comments from the community, which is why I stuck on the waiting list. My question is whether you've had any conversations with other tenants, adjoining tenants of that building, you know, so Temperance and the other uses in that building. Did we talk to Temperance yet?
I just, I don't think the actual owner. I've offhandedly spoken to some of the employees there.
The employees there, but not the owner.
Yeah.
Or whether the, whether the building owner has had any conversations with tenants. Are they aware of this proposal?
They are. I mean, we could go, if you want to bring it back up. Interestingly, the space they're taking in the building, the building over the years grew, and a lot of their, the walls to where their spaces, the space they're taking are former exterior walls of the building. So they're like 12 or 16 inches of brick, and there's also a exiting corridor that's going to be between some of the other spaces and their space. It turns out to be a fairly good natural fit. I mean, most, the sound is going to be down to the south, where we've got, as I said, a material handling yard and a Quonset hut that's basically stores, he's in the concrete business, so he stores his forms and his trucks and stuff. I mean, it's about as good a location to put this type of a use as there could be. I have talked to Sugar &amp; Spice about it. I have talked to Temperance about it. So, I mean, and as I said, in all honesty, my office is probably their closest neighbor. So I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with work. I mean, I've got, I've got, I mean, they've been in business, they have a good reputation, so I'm relying on that as well.
Are these parking spaces part of the lease?
The way we do parking, we've got this, the building, we've got about 11 tenants, and we've got over 300 parking spaces on site. We designate a very small percentage of those for pick-up and drop-off only for any of the tenants, and we do them in front of the daycare, we do them in front of Erie Family Health, we do them in front of the various tenants, and then all of the other spaces throughout, over the whole site are available for any of the employees, guests, or invitees of any of the other tenants, because otherwise, everybody wants the parking spaces right next to the building. You know, that's, no, that's just not the way we're going to do it. You know, we'll designate drop-off, pick-up and drop-off for where it makes sense for all the tenants, and then everyone parks, first come, first served.
Thank you.
How many dogs do you service at one time?
The plan is to have a maximum of 40 or 45 daycare dogs, and then at the, if you include the overnight boarding dogs at like the busiest times, it would be a max of 75.
75 dogs at once. Okay.
And yeah, that has the square footage.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
How do you get rid of dog waste?
In a dumpster. Just daily. Currently how we do it.
And is that, sorry, is there, is the space, what's the space where dogs are taken to exercise, poop, et cetera?
Sure, that's the, right there, the outdoor yard.
In the front?
So that's in the back. It's kind of on the other side of right that building, so that's kind of like a...
What's the surface of the outdoor yard?
Oh, it's currently asphalt, but we are planning on doing artificial turf.
Artificial turf, and so dog waste won't be left to sit there? It's picked up right away, or what's the...
Oh, right, yeah.
So can I ask you, will you be walking the dogs or only letting them in the exercise yard? You would take them by leash from your facility to the exercise yard and by leash back to your facility from the exercise yard?
Yeah, I don't think we would even need to do a leash. We'll have that corridor that will run, run right through there. We could, you know, leash them, but it's just a private corridor.
Sure, no, if it's secured.
Yeah, and we won't walk the dogs anywhere else around the property.
Okay. Promise? Because that was a huge problem with the other dog facility. All the grass in the neighborhood went brown.
Okay, yeah. No walks.
Did you have further comment?
No.
Thank you. We're going to close the record. Comments from the board?
Do we have testimony?
Oh, do we have other people to speak? Okay.
My name is Karina Bearman, and I live at 1218 Hartree Avenue. You can imagine my desire to be here to learn more about this project, and I'm very pleased to hear that it's actually 2000 Dumpster, but now I'm wondering if the people who live at 2000 Dumpster might have seen the Hartree notice and thought that it doesn't pertain to them. Just sorry, but it's true. And I wanted to, if I may through the chair, confirm some things that I heard through them, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Okay. So there won't be any Hartree access to your facility? It's all going to go through the, let's say, the Temperance access? It's all going to go through the, let's say, the Temperance access? Is that, that's true? Okay. The east side, okay. I think that the description described it on the west side of, the Sugar, on the west side of Sugar and Spice, which didn't make sense to me, so that's, that's good. The other, you made some comments about sound control, and I'm wondering if there's something in your industry that allows you to minimize the urine smell from the dogs going outside? Is that something that can be done, or is done in your area?
We have a current space, and we have a current outdoor yard that has artificial turf, and the only time the smell, the problem really is like August. We've tried two things, vinegar works the best, and it doesn't for now. Usually it won't be that bad unless you're standing in the oven, and then vinegar. It's also the best, that's the environment.
Okay. Excuse me, can you speak into the microphone so we can pick this up? Okay. Whenever you talk.
So vinegar seems to be the best thing to get rid of urine smell, and it doesn't, it doesn't seem to be too bad if you have artificial turf that drains well, which we are planning on making sure there's adequate drainage.
Okay.
I was just going to add to that, that that's kind of the beauty of where the yard is too, is there's nothing else really around it, and why it's taken us two years to find a spot, because we wanted the outdoor yard to be surrounded, like nowhere near houses and nowhere near, but typically you can't smell it, like Becky said, unless you're like standing in the yard, and we try our best to control the odor too, because we don't want to smell it, and we don't want our training clients coming in and it smelling like urine too, so.
That sounds, that sounds like a reasonable motivation to, to keep that smell down. My, my only other comment on the, well, kind of concern about the project is that Hartree Avenue already is like a thoroughfare, it's marked as 20 miles per hour. As someone mentioned earlier, we have the new ETHS Alternative School, which has developmentally and emotionally challenged students. We have ETHS students that walk along Hartree to get to the high school, which is at the end of the block. We have the disabled adult care, which is their, I think it's, is it Rimland Homes? Rimland Homes has adult care for challenged adults and those with autism. We have disabled children who live next door to me. We have the swimming program at the Goldfish Swim School with just kids under 12, all day long, every day, all night, you know, you can't get to your beer without, you know, being worried about a child in a towel. And then, of course, we have the kinder care, preschool children who also use the same parking lot. So I, I am not voicing any objection to this business. We, we love where we live, it's a strange mix of residents and industry, it makes for really quiet weekends, but I just want to make sure that you guys know, because you don't live there, or maybe you do, but you know, that you're putting, you're going into a place that has a lot of sensitive need people, and I would highly recommend that the city consider putting in a speed bump on Hartree, even though I know that your access is there, it's still going to come through Hartree. We get people going to Temperance all the time, and they stop and ask, they can't find the bar. So it's, it's not, I'm not judging your project, I think it's great, I love dogs, I'll probably bring mine over, we love our community, but we just, we want it to be safe, and every time we add something new, it means more people coming through. So if the board could take that into consideration, or the city could look into that, that would be fantastic. Otherwise, thank you for bringing another business to Evanston.
Thank you. Staff says that Public Works is in charge of that type of thing.
I used to have our offices on Hartree, so I know what she's referring to, but as a practical matter, what we've actually done is we've taken a part of the space, the tapes unlimited space, it used to totally have all traffic in and out on the Hartree side, and now we've moved that to this, now we've moved about 25% of that space, and it's going to access through the east lot. There will be some traffic on Hartree, but I think the major, obviously the majority of their traffic is going to come in and out of the east lot to get to their location, so.
Thank you. Any further comment, questions for this respondent? Let's close the record from the board. Support, yea or no?
I think that would give us a chance, they're experienced, and this is an industrial spot, and, and so I think that we should recommend approval, or are we the determining body?
The ZBA is the recommending body on this to City Council.
Yeah, I think that we should recommend that City Council look favorably upon this.
I agree, especially with the commitment to soundproof the kennel area and the indoor play area.
I support the project. The owner has a good track record, has an existing business in the community that's well utilized, and, you know, wants to grow in Evanston, so I commend that.
I support the project.
Yeah, same here, I fully support it. I would agree with the comment, the last comment about the speed bumps on Hartree. I am, I am very often in this area, and I would say that this street somehow attracts speedy drivers, I don't know why, so it's good to have speed bumps over there if we can contribute to this thinking, so it's good to have it.
Is that something that we can, I don't know that we'd want to, no, we wouldn't.
Scott says that that's a purview of traffic, and it's Public Works, it's not in our purview. Jill?
I just, I also am happy to support the project. I like to support Evanston businesses continuing to grow and expand. I would ask, and I don't think it's, I think that you're amenable to this, just that you're cognizant of the noise, especially in the outdoor area, the noise, the odors, just, I appreciate that you've taken care to find a site that suits your special needs, but just to remember that, you know, that there are adjacent users and residents to consider as well.
I agree with you, Jill. And with that, I'm going to read the standards for this. Special use standards. For the ZBA to recommend that City Council grant a special use, the ZBA must find that the proposed special use A is one of the listed special uses for the zoning district in which the property lies. Daycare is an existing use. B complies with the purposes and policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. The use is compliant with the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive general plan. The project promotes growth of an existing commercial structure while permitting a local business to expand to meet the market demand for this particular service. C does not cause a negative cumulative effect in combination with existing special uses or as a category of land use. The proposed special use is appropriate for the location, and the owner has proposed an on-leash policy to abate any potential conflict between proximate users, uses and users. D does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. The proposed business will occupy an interior space proximate to other commercial and industrial uses with little or no potential for adverse impact such as noise on residential uses. E is adequately served by public facilities and uses. The building is served by adequate sidewalks and streets, as well as garbage collection, on-site parking, and loading docks. F does not cause undue traffic congestion. The facility is accessed by a major roadway and has adequate parking for the proposed use, including dedicated parking for clients. G preserves significant historical and architectural uses, that's not applicable. H preserves significant natural and environmental resources, also not applicable. And I complies with all other applicable regulations. The project complies with all other applicable regulations to move forward with the special use process. Will somebody please call a motion?
Yep. I move in the matter 19ZMJV-0070 with respect to the property at 1245 Hartree, that we recommend to City Council to approve the special use requested, subject to the condition that the rooms designated on the record for soundproofing be soundproofed, and that the owner operate the business and develop the project otherwise in accordance with the testimony and documents submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sorry, one thing, on special uses, we normally do hours of operation.
Okay, hours of operation.
So Scott, what's the character of hours for this block of?
So I think there's a range, but they also have overnight boarding in this case. So, and at least for that portion, the operation would be typical, it'd be 24 hours.
Okay. Never mind then.
I guess you are approved. Everybody voted. Recommendation to City Council. Okay, 2412 Wade, is the respondent in the room? Are they still here? Come up, please. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for your patience. I'll try to be quick.
One second. Scott's going to read it into the record, please.
Yes, good evening. Nathan Kipnis, Architects, admits for major zoning relief to construct a new single-family residence in the R2 Single Family Residential District. The applicant requests a 27 and a half foot front yard setback along Wade Street, where 50 feet is required due to the block average, and a detached accessory structure located closer to the street side yard along Leland Avenue than the principal structure. Zoning Board appeals the determining body for this case. Staff and DAPR have reviewed this and made recommendations, recommended approval of the first variation for the location of the house 27.5 feet from the front yard setback along Wade, with the condition that the applicant be responsible for providing a sidewalk on the public right-of-way along both Wade and Leland, and then also recommending denial of the requested variation for the location of the detached accessory structure, the garage being located closer to Leland than the houses. That concludes the summary of the staff report. Thank you.
Please proceed.
Hey, my name is Dan Contreras, I'm with Kipnis Architecture and Planning, we're at 1642 Payne Street here in Evanston. We've been doing green architecture for, she's about 25, 30 years almost, before people knew what green was, so this is going to be a good example of what we really believe in for sustainability and things like that. If we can go to the site plan, just to start with, kind of talk you through the drawings. This is a corner lot, a corner lot of Wade and Leland. What we wanted to do was position the house similarly to the direct adjacent neighbor to the, to the east. Because this is a corner lot, we ended up having to do an average of the block, and there's only two houses on this block. The other house, which is not shown on this site plan, is basically a house that's in the alley. It's throwing the average way off, so I think this is a reasonable approach to utilize this site that's been vacant for, geez, I don't know, 50 years, 60 years, so we're hoping this is compatible with a lot of the needs of filling that lot and kind of addressing, addressing that. The thing I wanted to go over is, you know, sustainability is our main focus, and we're going to be doing that here. We're planning on doing, I think it's probably a 60% better-than-code for energy usage, so we're proud about that fact. We're also trying to make this house kind of be an anchor point in that neighborhood. It's, it is different, I will grant you that, but we're in Evanston, and we have, you know, 60, you know, 70 different decades of styles in the entire Evanston area, and I think this is a good example of what we do. If we can look at the elevations. So this is a standard single-family home. We are limiting the height of the building in general to that flat roof section, so that is about 26 feet, a little higher than 26 feet. There's a portion of the house in the, in the front of the property, it's about 18 feet long, where there is a peaked roof that is a little higher than the rest of the building. That is at 38, I believe, no, I'm sorry, 34. So well within code, I mean, this is below what's allowable by code. The thing we're asking for is that front yard setback, which I think is not an unreasonable request for this lot. The garage issue is a different situation we have, if you want to go back to the site plan to look at that. That, I, if we were to read the section of code that's being referenced there, I don't think that applies to us. It, if I can read that here for the record. So it's Section 4, Section 64, 63, subsection 2, not, accessory structures detached are not to be located in a side yard abutting a street or interior side yard between a principal structure and the side lot line. So that's telling me that this garage is not applicable to this section of code. We've talked with Michael Griffith about this, and they told me that this is an interpretation that they're making, and I don't necessarily agree with that interpretation. I don't see that written in the code, and I'm just basically asking for a point of clarification. This is a garage that is wholly not in the side yard and wholly in the rear yard, so I don't know if that's applicable in this particular case. So we are compliant if we were to read the letter of this zoning code and how that pertains to a detached accessory structure. On recommendation from the DARPA meeting, they wanted us to include a sidewalk with the granting of this variance, and one of the things that, although we don't disagree with the need of a sidewalk in the neighborhood, it is a financial burden to these homeowners to, basically we costed that out to about $10,000 of concrete, because there's literally no sidewalk to start with. It's a big price tag, and it comes to a point where it's jeopardizing the feasibility of this project.
Does that include a 50/50 sidewalk program?
It's our, our understanding that that does not apply, because it's not an existing sidewalk to begin with. So that's what they're telling us, so no. So that burden falls wholly on the homeowners, and I also want to point out that these are homeowners, they're not developers, so there's a lot of the correspondence that was opposed to this, referencing that this is a development and it, by a developer, and it's not. This is a homeowner, they're a young couple, they want to go into Evanston, build their dream house, and they're stretching the limit of their budget to make this happen. So I just wanted to stress the, the burden of that sidewalk, although we agree would be a great benefit, is, is kind of a big burden for that homeowner to take the brunt of.
I just wanted to ask you a question. There are two other houses on this block.
Yeah.
And neither of those houses have sidewalks either.
No.
So the sidewalk would just end at the end of your property line?
Yeah, it, I have, I have some supporting photos of just like street views to show that there's basically no sidewalks anyways. It didn't make sense to me to add a sidewalk that just starts and stops. It seems like the park entrances, which I think would be the purpose of adding a sidewalk, those enter directly off of the cul-de-sac, the turnaround, so I think the intention is that people are walking through, they're parking their car and walking through the street, and I think that's, from my understanding, that's kind of how it's been. There are, there is a sidewalk on the east side of Leland, that's, you know, the entire way, but none, no sidewalks on Wade or the other entrance to Beck Park. I don't know if you guys want to add anything? These are the homeowners, this is Anna and Kehanda. I'll let you speak if you want.
So it's Dan mentioned, Anna Monsonades, and we just wanted to share that we did a lot of research when we were looking for places to find, you know, to, to construct our, our new home. One of the due diligence that we, we did do is to reach out to the city of Evanston, we submitted a Freedom of Information Act, because we wanted to make sure that whatever we were buying was suitable to, to our needs. We were really, really excited to come and live in Evanston, we currently live in Rogers Park. We currently live in Rogers Park, and I was really excited. For years, for actually 10 years, I've been wanting to move to Evanston, and constructing was the dream that I've had, at least for the last 10 years, and I've been, you know, we both have been saving to do this. You know, and I do, with all due respect, I do want to mention that back in March, I reached out to Michael Griffith. And this was before we purchased our lot. And I said, hey, first, I have several questions, but the first one was, what are the setbacks? And nowhere did it mention that the setbacks were going to be 50 feet into the lot. And, you know, I have a copy of the email. I, you know, maybe there was a misinterpretation at the time, but we purchased the lot knowing our setbacks, knowing our limitations, knowing the fact that it's not a historic zoning, which is stated in the email. So when we thought, we want to build an eco-friendly house, this is it, like, we can do this. And it's a really beautiful area, so I just want to share that we didn't just purchase the lot, we did a lot of research. I came here a couple of times and even went through the microfiche to go through what had been proposed in the past.
We have before us several pages from the West End Area Block Club, and they have spelled out five different concerns. Are you in, have you seen this, and can you speak to these concerns?
Are you talking about the emails or?
No, about a handout that they gave us today, which is Exhibit 1 for this number.
No, this was included in the packet that was online, though.
I don't think this was in the packet, was it, Scott?
No, it was an email that was received this evening.
So I don't think the concerns are, I think the concerns you've probably heard, should I just walk through them and ask that they respond to them? Because we're going to hear about them from neighbors, so would it be most expedient to just ask them to speak to these issues while they're at the?
You can ask them whatever questions you want. Say, go for it.
All right, so certainly, one of the issues is sidewalk, and we heard a bit about that. It sounds like the homeowners on Wade Street are open to extending the sidewalk beyond what is just in front of your house, and I don't want to steal what neighbors are going to say, so I won't, you know, I'll just sort of highlight some of the concerns. So one issue is the sidewalk. One issue is the setback. There's a question as to why the house is oriented as close as it is to the nearest adjoining property, I guess the one that's shown there. Going through this, there's a question of orientation, why the house is oriented along the narrow edge, sort of oriented towards, I think that's Wade Street as opposed to Leland, you know, the use of fencing along Leland. And then one that is a little unclear to me, maybe this makes more sense to lot abatement. Apparently, this block club has been told on several occasions that the lot has remained vacant due to land abatement issues, making it costly to build a home on this lot. Basically, they want to make sure that construction is not started and unforeseen issues make it impossible to build on this lot. Why has it been vacant for 40-some years?
Well, I think the soil condition, we had a soil test done, and the bearing capacity of the soil is very bad. We actually, it's one of the reasons why the building is as high as it is. The foundation that we had to design to was at about 48 inches below grade, so we can't do like a full, you know, basement like we normally could everywhere else in Evanston. The soil condition is that bad. I think that's kind of one of the biggest hurdles of making this lot work. And it might have been that the setbacks might have been an issue before, I don't know. But that wasn't made clear in the very beginning, and obviously Anna mentioned that as she was in the process of buying the property to make sure, she knew that upfront, and that turned out to be a little different, yeah.
And can you speak to some of the other issues raised about the house orientation and why it's located in the lot as it is so close to the neighboring residence?
Well, it's, one, not to be so imposing on the street. We realize it is higher than the rest of the buildings in the immediate area, so it's just to buffer that a little bit. It's also to take advantage of the side yard for the homeowners. If you know, I don't know if you can zoom in on there, but one of the things that we did, we realized the entrance to that immediate neighbor is on the side, and to the property line, it's less than three feet. So we pushed that a little bit further to give them a little extra room. It's not a lot, but it's basically another foot and a half or so that we, by right, could have built the other way. So that's another consideration. We are doing a solar, you know, design, so we wanted to push that house as far to the north to get the solar angles to work on the back of the house. The family room has a solar overhang that's designed to maximize sunlight and heat gain in the winter and block everything in the summer. So it plays to our eco-friendly design process. The garage being on the south side, obviously, we wanted to get that to the alley, so that makes sense. And it also, or it also is going to have some solar panels facing south as well. So those are going to be oriented that way to maximize that efficiency.
Would it negatively, how would it impact your project to push the house further away from the adjacent house?
It's basically splitting the lot. You know, we're having two really dinky yards at that point. We're trying to get all the usable space on one side to maximize the use of the lot. So having a yard on the side over here that's inadequate, and then a yard on the other side that really doesn't seem adequate either, doesn't make a lot of sense.
How big is that side yard now?
As drawn?
Yes.
That is, it's about six feet. So the setbacks are five feet per code. We're positioning the building at about six foot and a quarter-ish, like, we just pushed it a little before that.
And on the other side?
On the other side, to the property line, we got 30 foot eight.
So that's not a dinky side yard?
No, but if we were to split that?
I'm not suggesting splitting it, but perhaps?
Pushing the house further.
Right, some concession to that neighboring?
Yeah, and we have, we, again, by right.
By a foot?
Yeah. By right, we could have, we could have put that house all the way to the edge. We didn't.
Okay.
And we're up for that, you know, discussion, that it's just something we haven't heard from.
It also creates, now you're not meeting the setback requirement on the street. Because it's a corner lot, you have issues with setbacks on three sides.
Right.
Plus your neighbors. So by right, they have five feet to the edge next to your neighbor. That is, they could build it all the way up to five feet if they wanted to.
Right.
They're at six and a quarter, so an extra foot. If they continue to move the house towards Leland, then you create now you're in bigger or a larger debt into the setback.
Would that impact it even if they push it another foot, another two feet?
No, not really. Well, it would because what they're asking for is a certain setback. So the more you push it in, then it just creates a?
The setback they're asking for is on the front side of the property.
Right.
But you still have a setback because you have two streets.
No, no, I know.
You have the same amount of setback requirement on Leland than you do on Wade.
I don't think, I'm happy to stand corrected.
I have a corner lot.
Do they have the exact same setback if the house is oriented forward?
Yeah, the required street-side yard setback is 15 feet, so that's the dash line that's shown here from Leland. The required setback from Wade, because that block averaging, is 50 feet. So those are the difference in setbacks.
Right, so they have plenty of play on the Leland side to move the house another foot or two without impacting that setback.
But they don't have to. By right, they don't have to.
I understand. No, I got that. I understand that. Thank you for clarifying. So by right, I understand that you are within your rights to build it where it is on the lot. And then a question for staff. On this question of the sidewalk, can you clarify whether a 50-50 sidewalk program would qualify here, or if they are asked to build the sidewalk in front of their house, whether, you know, the neighbors have said they would be willing to have the sidewalk extended along Wade, it sounds like they're, is there money in any way to help establish or reestablish the sidewalk network in this area?
Can't speak totally to that. It did come up at DAPR, and it was suggested that the applicant speak with Public Works about the 50-50 program and encouraged to speak with staff about the 50-50 and the ability to work something out for that.
And we did make that effort, and that's kind of what they told us, that it wouldn't apply because there's no existing sidewalk to repair and share the cost to repair.
I do take, I do take issue with, you know, with someone coming into the neighborhood and wanting to build what I'm sure is a beautiful house, but then not sort of doing what's, in my opinion, the appropriate thing, which is to help, you know, build the sidewalk network there. And so I get that it's an additional financial burden.
Yeah, and then $10,000.
I understand.
Making sure that's?
I understand.
It's about 1,100 square feet of concrete. It's a lot. It's two sides of the street.
But to your point, you said that's probably the best thing, like, you agree that the sidewalk should be there.
Yeah, if it existed, that would be great. The question is, does the burden fall on the homeowner to pay for that?
All right, can the city then go to the other property owners on that block and say, we're going to require you to put sidewalks in? I mean, that's, I know that they're asking for, you know, variances, and that's where you have the opportunity to say, you know, we'll throw you a bone, you throw us a bone. But it's a very expensive bone, and then you have a sidewalk that ends at their property line. It doesn't extend through the other houses on the block. And so, I mean, I just, I don't understand how that is equitable. I'm having a little bit of a problem with the city not owning the fact that there's infrastructure necessary there and that all of the neighbors should have a sidewalk that is safe for the children who travel through that area of the city, rather than hooking that burden on new incoming homeowners, you know, who, a young couple trying to build a house. I'm not comfortable with that.
I don't disagree. I think it's a question for the alderman to say, how can this be a priority?
I just want to make one comment, and then we need to let the neighbors speak. Well, and maybe that's where we should just go, unless you have some?
Yeah, I want to also add, just on the, so there's three things. The front yard setback, which seems like a reasonable request. The sidewalk cost burden, which we talked about. The third was the accessory, position of the accessory structure, the garage, close to the street yard. I have, just in a quick Google street search, found, you know, three houses in the area that have that same scenario, one of which was just constructed. So it's a little hard for me to kind of do what I do when the rules don't apply to everyone, and it's hard for me to explain that to the homeowners, too. The idea of the garage being pushed to the limit of the side yard setback seems reasonable. Pushing that all the way back, I don't think that gains anything for anyone. And in fact, the homeowners kind of lose their view of what they plan to do, some landscaping in that area. There's an existing tree that then we would need to take down if we were to move that garage back. So that's just something I just wanted to point out. But I have a list of properties that we can just look up, or I can show you images, however you want to approach that.
I mean, so I'll just comment on that last point quickly. Everybody that wants to build something either builds it to what the code requires or they come in for a variation, and every variation request is a separate request. So a lot of people come in and they say, oh, well, look at, there's like six examples of something that I want to do, and the circumstances aren't apparent why that was granted or when it was granted, or if it was granted at all. So I don't, to me, that's not an effective argument. It doesn't really sway how I feel about this, but it's not an effective argument to say, well, someone else did it, so we should be allowed to do it as well.
My argument is, if you were to read the code and follow the letter of the code, that interpretation does not make sense. It doesn't, it's a re, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't understand how we can get from the text that's written to accessory structures can't be farther or closer to the street than the principal structure. That's not what it says. So that's my point. And Michael Griffith and staff have said that's kind of been the precedent of interpreting that specific section. I just don't understand why, and it makes my job more difficult to understand that when the rules aren't what they are written down and the interpretation is different.
Scott, for the non-architect person here, can you explain why that is the staff interpretation? What's the benefit of that?
Sure. I think it generally has to do with the relationship between a principal structure and accessory structure, that you don't want the accessory structure to be the most prominent feature closest to the street. You know, shed or garage should be subordinate to the principal structure and thereby located, you know, even with or behind it. You know, if the applicant wanted to appeal that interpretation, that would be submitting an application for an appeal, but we have not received that.
I was only understanding that this was the process that we would go through to clarify that interpretation.
In my view, the garage structure issue is self-created by a couple things here. One is the desire to move the house further off of Wade Street, further back off of Wade Street, right? So you don't want to move the garage so it's even with the house because you've pushed the house way back off of Wade Street. Second is because the owners would like to have a landscaped area on the lower side of the drawing, on the other side of the garage. That's a like-to-have. Third is that they've oriented the house at the end of the property, which, to your point, they can do by right, but that also carries with it, at least under one interpretation of the ordinance, carries with it a consequence that the garage also should be moved to that location. So I think the garage problem for me is a little bit of a self-created problem. That's just kind of how I feel about that.
So, I mean, just to reiterate, when I'm reading the code, this is all by right. That accessory position, the position of the accessory structure seems to comply with the code as written. That's kind of the hardship that I'm having. Like, I don't understand how we're taking that leap with that interpretation.
Is that not, then, would that not be a legal question, a legal interpretation beyond staff? I mean, how do we get beyond sort of what staff's interpretation is versus the applicant's reading of the zoning? How do, is that a legal interpretation? Where are we at with that?
Determination of staff or the zoning administrator can be appealed to the Zoning Board of Appeals. An applicant would submit an appeal application, as we heard earlier this evening. In this case, the applicant's requested a variation from that section of the code.
And again, just to make this, draw this point down, the code says that it should not be located in a side yard abutting a street, and that's not what's happening here. We are not within the side yard. We're in the rear yard. That's exactly what it says in the code. So I don't think I'm requesting anything that's unreasonable.
You described that as a side yard. You said that they wanted to have a large side yard.
It's actually, it's actually a front yard.
Oh, it's way too late to start playing.
Well, side, street-side yard, yes.
Well, yes, but it's, because you are on a corner, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Like I said, I have the same lot, except I don't have an alley. But, and I'm considered, I have two front yards on both sides of the street.
But we are complying with both, you know, that side, street-side yard setback with this accessory.
Yeah, because they're at 15 feet. So they are setting it back 15 feet.
We're not within that side yard, that required zoning side yard. Just want to make that point because it, again, I'm just trying to do my job here, and I'm reading the rules of the game, and the rules of the game are telling me this, and then the interpretation is different.
We can. I'm just going to say that in the packet, it says, "The city staff and DAPR recommend denial of major zoning relief for the detached accessory structure located closer to the street side yard than the principal structure because compliance is achievable. No hardship or particular difficulty peculiar to the subject property exists, and the proposal is not in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance."
Yeah, again, the rule, the written text of that section that they're referencing does not correlate with that interpretation, which is what I'm considering that hardship. It doesn't make sense.
Okay. Any perceived hardship or practical difficulty remains unfounded, and no evidence to the contrary was submitted to the committee or provided to city staff as a part of the written responses in this application.
Because it was, again, an interpretation issue.
He's presenting that to us now.
Yeah.
By virtue of saying, here's what the text says.
Saying, he's saying it is compliant. So it's just a disagreement about the interpretation and whether this is compliant or not. If it's not compliant, then staff is saying, compliance could be achieved by locating it the other way.
Right.
And he's saying compliance is being achieved because this ordinance doesn't say what you think it says.
Okay, so you're keeping it together. Okay.
The other thing I would mention is, you know, we've explored different, you know, scenarios here, even the thought of pushing the principal structure up to that side yard and making that part of the zoning code compliant with the interpretation. It, it just doesn't make sense. So, I'm just trying to do our...
Again, there's a definition of side yard within the zoning ordinance. That's a yard extending along the side lot line between the front and rear yards, except that a side yard abutting a street shall be defined as the yard extending along the side lot line between the front yard and the rear lot line. So, that, that yard goes all the way to the rear lot line, not to the rear required yard as part of the definition.
Yeah. And that would be the scenario here. No.
So, this is, this is within the street, the side yard?
No, it's not. So, that's...
The definition of the side yard is a yard extending along the side lot line between the front and rear yards, except that a side yard abutting a street shall be defined as a yard extending along a side lot line between the front yard and the rear lot line.
So, that 15-foot setback is, is not in play here? Is that what we're saying with that?
The side yard extends all the way to, to the alley.
Correct. That dash line.
And so, that garage is located within that side yard. It's not the required side yard. It's the side yard.
Oh, just the side yard in general. Yeah. So, I was just going off of the definitions that were listed in the zoning code, and even the diagram that you have listed describing this side yard, even like just what a side yard is, what a front yard is. It didn't follow that diagram that you had on your zoning code.
Again, if you wanted to appeal the determination, you could do that to separate process. It's not what we're here for this evening.
Although, we have had problems with definition of side yard on more than one occasion, and perhaps it's timely to revise the text, but that's another time.
Have you considered attached garage?
I just wanted to, this is what I'm looking for.
We know all this. Have you considered attached garage?
Yeah, we considered attached garages. The problem with that is being a sustainable practice. We, we want to limit the amount of contaminants in the house. And if you actually follow lead in general, they actually discourage attached houses, just to limit the amount of contaminants coming from the garage into the house. Because it's attached, it's more likely that you would bring in things that are undesirable inside the house, where we don't want to do that. The, having that detached allows that more control environment of the interior space. So, that's, yes, we explored that. We didn't think that made sense. The other thing we wanted to do is maximize the solar, solar gain of the house. So, having that south end with glass was to our advantage in that, in that respect.
So, Scott, my question is, should we make two motions for this? One for the house, one for the attached?
Violetta, in the interest of time, we need to let these neighbors come up.
Most definitely, I agree, but I'm just trying to see how we proceed.
I understand, but can we hear from the neighbors in the event that people need to get home? So, at least that way their testimony is on record.
Certainly. Think about that.
Sure.
Yeah. So, maybe by the end, by the time we're ready for a motion, we could decide which two. Are you finished with your presentation, sir?
Yeah. If I, I don't know if I get a chance to respond afterward. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Who is speaking? Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Russ Joseph. My wife and I have lived at the 1740 Leland for the past 14 years. I want to echo the concerns raised by the Western Area Block Club submitted to you in earlier correspondence, and I want to voice my thoughts specifically on the need for public sidewalk, particularly on Leland. My wife and I have two young daughters who use Beck Park on a daily basis when the weather cooperates. My younger daughter uses a wheelchair and is not able to partake in many of the games and activities that other kids do. In what I think is an excellent example of the welcoming and inclusive city that Evanston can be, the Parks Department installed an adaptive swing this past spring. In a word, she loves it. Unfortunately, we don't have safe, safe access to the playground at the moment. The sidewalk up the west end, the west side of the 1800 block of Leland currently dead ends at the alley behind the 2400 block of Leland, of lines. To walk to Beck Park Playground from the 1700 block of Leland, my older daughter needs to step into the street, and we need to wheel my younger daughter alongside moving traffic. Leland is a surprisingly busy one-way street because many people use it as a cut-through to get from church to Emerson. The park is an important part of our neighborhood. It is a gathering spa, place for many of the young children in our neighborhood. Safe access to the park is an important quality of life issue for all of us, but especially for our children, disabled residents in wheelchairs, and seniors using walkers. For this reason, I believe that a public sidewalk needs to be installed on Leland.
Thank you.
Sir, may I just ask, do you know whether you personally, or whether the block, the block association has had any of these conversations regarding a public sidewalk with Alderman Simmons?
Yeah. Yeah. So, apparently, our alderman promised to send a letter of support to you.
She did send a letter saying that these guys should be forced to put a sidewalk in.
Okay.
But she did not say that she would assure that the city did their part and continued the sidewalk along the other properties. So, you know, perhaps they knew applicants and all of the neighbors should go to Public Works or Parks and Recreation even to ask that this infrastructure deficiency be corrected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole Pinker, 2415 Wade, across the street. And I hope when all this is over, we have a phenomenal block. I've been there three years. Great neighbors, but we're all concerned about making it cohesive. I looked at the same lot. Love what you're doing, but a couple of concerns. One, with regard to the setback, and particularly in regards to the house at 2416. In looking at the proposed lot and thinking about the neighbor, a neighbor who lives in that house, elderly neighbor who lives in that house, the, where your house is and where her door is, there's going to be a sizable dead tunnel for her to walk to her door. And the five feet set aside, I mean, if you just look out her door, she's right on the hedges. Well, that was allowed to happen, but now with this house comes building right up to the edge. When you have 60 feet, it just doesn't seem like the neighborly thing to do. At the same time, it's a corner lot. All the other corner lots, houses are turned with the long edges facing the street. So, we also have the issue of, in addition of, we don't have long fences in the front of the house, so we're going to have this really long block with a five-foot-high fence, closed fence, because their side yard, which is every other corner lot's front yard, is going to be nothing but a, a fence, which is again, a little against the tenure and the, and the structure of the neighborhood. And the sidewalk, again, the city has chosen to put this park, which we love there, but it's not a sidewalk. And you also have the football field of Evanston right behind it. So, on game days, people are just coming down this one-way street, and you have kids who are outside trying to play. It's just not safe. And because there hasn't been a house in that lot, people have just walked through the lot, right? It's the de facto walk, walk through the lot. Now, there's a house. We're happy there'll be a house there. But now we have the real thing. If you're going to have some kids hit coming down the street because they're trying to get to the park while people are trying to get to the game. It's just not a safe, it shouldn't have to be, the neighbors. But if that's the way Evanston is, whoever comes into that spot needs to, should be, can deal with that. So, I think the house orientation, the decision to make it a long as opposed to orient it the other way is creating, is making this house look different than anything else. Not that it's big. We find that it's a big house. Not a problem. But everything about orienting it means you have a fence, that there is an offense. You have the garage, which is, if you're looking down Leland, that's what you're going to see. You're going to see the garage. You're not going to see the house because garage is sitting out there. And now you have an elderly neighbor where you've butted this really big house up to the side that even has rain barrels, and she's going to have a five-foot-high fence. So, she's going to have a, right out her door, a five-foot-high fence that she's looking into next to 34-point X-high wall, where you have a 60-foot lot. So, I just think from a neighborly standpoint, there's ways in which you can have a beautiful house there that is the best house in the block, but is also, you know, being respectful of the neighborhood that we're all hoping to live in for a very long time. And then the last thing is the abatement. We just, everyone hears that there's something in that spot, and we just don't want to end up with a situation where you open it up, there's a problem, and then no one puts it back. So, can we just make sure that once it's open, it gets built, if, when it gets built?
And when you say that you hear that there's something in that spot...
I can, two of the neighbors who live, so one neighbor who lives directly two doors over, actually, we can speak to the homeowners who live next door can speak to that. But definitely the house, the house to the lot that has a basement has, has water issues, problems. And they're the closest house to the, the closest house to the, to the, to the, to the park. But I'm probably some of the neighbors, can you actually, this is the neighbor, the next-door neighbor, who has the small house right next to you, who, who the house, the closeness of the house is impacting. And she's also had some thoughts around the water. Have you said that, can you?
Thank you.
My name is Christine Jones, and I live at 2416 Wade. And if these people build this home, this huge home, I'm going to disappear. I'm, that house is going to be invisible because it's a one-story house on a slab. And the other two houses are bigger houses, but I have no problem with that and seeing and, you know, seeing things and planting my roses and being able to see the sun. But if you build that house the way that you want to build it, I will come invisible. And you're giving me a problem because you're putting that house right up to my front door. And I can't get out of the door, and emergency people cannot come and get me when I get sick. I have two types of arthritis, osteo and rheumatoid. And you're making a problem for me. And maybe you can take that in consideration and figure how you're going to fix your house where it won't be a problem to me.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Hi. I'm Kimberly A. Jones. I'm her daughter. I live at the, at the dwelling at 2416 Wade. We've been there about 19 years. I went to Evanston Township High School. I graduated in '83. And that whole time, no one has been in that lot. And it's been a long time. No one has been in that lot. And if they build this house, it's going to flood our home. And we're not going to have the, all the plants and all the flowers, roses and everything. They're going to die. So, it's, it's a big impact on us. So, I don't have a problem with building something there, but think about the other people that's in that area and live there. So, and, and it has sinkholes and everything there. And it floods all the time. And during the rainy season, you could come over and see it. So, it's, it's a big impact on us. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Is there another neighbor that would like to speak?
Hi. I'm Janet Alexander Davis. I live at 1726 Leland. And hello and welcome. I know this is hard because it's hard for us, too, and I know it's hard for you. But to hear, you know, that we have a right, we also have a right to our neighborhood. And the neighborhood seems like it's getting awful interesting. Our, how, our, that area over there, Laurel and Leland especially, have Georgian homes, two-story Georgian brick homes, yes, that were built when the men were coming back from the war. That's when they were built. My family bought the current house I live in in 1948. And so, that lot has been like that as long as I can remember. The fact that we can't consider the fact that we're an area, the 1700 block of McDaniel and also Wade, and that part of Leland has never had a sidewalk, is really a disgrace. Now, maybe there'll be those that say, "Well, you should have fought for it even earlier." A lot of us on the west side don't always know that we have a right to fight something, like having a garbage dump in the middle of our neighborhood. We really didn't know that we could do something about it. And this is another situation that I just really wish that you would consider how something should fit also in where you're going. You can have the most beautiful house there. You will be happy there because there's some really good people there. We are a block club that meets the second Tuesday of every month. We have had a block club since around 1965. We have met every single month, all of Alderman Homes tenure and before. And so, we try to take care of our neighbors and our neighbors. This is a neighborhood that takes care of the neighbor. So, with that said, there are a lot of them that couldn't be here tonight. There, I'm 76 years old, and some are older than I am. And for my neighbor next door to this property, not to be considered that this, building it the way you want to build it might be your right, but is it the right thing to do without considering neighbors? I'm a real estate agent since 1987. I am still licensed. I've seen a lot of houses. I've been in a lot of houses. And one of the things that started to happen, I don't know, in the early 90s in North Evanston, people, I guess, wanted to buy another house. You know, they wanted more space. And they looked all over, but they wanted to live in Evanston. And so, they started building up and out. And a lot of places, I have friends that live in California or, or Dallas, and they say, "Why do your properties cost so much, and they're so small?" Well, one reason is to have a vacant lot in Evanston is amazing to even be able to purchase because we don't have land, open land like that. That's why everybody wanted to move to Skokie. Remember that, 30 years ago? Because they had land, and houses could be a lot more attractive, maybe. But the bottom line is, we had mostly one-story houses that it looks like lately, people are buying and they're adding on. The blue house in our neighborhood, we love it. It's beautiful. But it's, I, I said it when it was going to be built. It's too tall for that corner, and it causes problems. So, in my letters to you, I was talking about how it feels to live in that community. You can't just walk through or drive through and see what it's like to actually live there. It's true that we have to go through alleys to get around. So, in some of you, as you think over all of this, please read our letters. I didn't see in the packet all of the communications that I think you should have received. I don't know why that happened. But I'm grateful to be here tonight. I'm grateful to you young people. I think this is awesome that you want to start your life and start it in that neighborhood. That's the one to be in. Thank you.
Thank you. And we did receive some letters this evening in a packet. Is there another neighbor that'd like to speak to this? Anybody else? Ah-ha. Sir, could you come up to the microphone and say your name again?
My name is Henrik Trowers. I live in Leland. I've been living there now about 38 years. And I've seen a lot of stuff, a lot of people. I'm going to blame the city for one thing because the street is okay. The house that the lady have on the other side of Wade, she's okay. That's her house. She's been there. If somebody else is coming in the area to buy a piece of land, that lady with the house have the right, not the city. The city do a lot of things that is right, but not the city at this time. Because if I live in Wade, I would go to the city and let them know this where, that's where I live. This man, he might buy the place already. I don't know. But whatever information you have, that lady that live there have the right to do what you want to do. I've seen a lot of people come, and they buy the property, and then they go to the city. And what happened, they have to resell it again because they cannot do anything there. and what happened, they have to resell it again because they cannot do anything there because the lady have the right or the persons that live there have the right to make their decisions. So sir, as much as you want the place, I know because I buy a piece, I buy a house right there, it's difficult and you might not get the opportunity that you need. And if you do, you might lose. Because the city, they, I live here and I know I'd be in trouble speaking about the city, but there's something wrong right at that spot with that home, with that land. So be careful. And forgive me for blaming the city, I pay taxes to you now. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Next neighbor.
Hello.
Hi.
I live at twenty-four eleven Wade Street, which is the next property north. So my front yard faces their front yard. And first off, welcome to the neighborhood, I moved in about a year ago, it's a great neighborhood. I don't have a single bad thing to say, it's a great experience. With that, I just do have a couple of quick comments. First, for your own benefit, definitely check the soil. My house has sunk close to six inches over fifty years before I owned it, but there's definitely something. And I know about a year ago, there was a sinkhole in the park, so just check things for your own benefit. Other than that, regarding the sidewalks, I would just like to clarify that not everyone would like a sidewalk put in on their property. I do think that it would be very beneficial to the neighborhood to have a sidewalk put in on this property where there is enough space and where it would lead to, directly into the cul-de-sac, where there is a sidewalk going right into the park. But for some of the other existing lots, there isn't enough space for a sidewalk. If I had a sidewalk on my lot, it'd be one foot from my kid's bedroom window. Additionally, if that were to occur and it became something where as anyone would need a variation, then they're required to do a sidewalk. Just, I want everyone to understand that that cost falls on each property owner. And that could be for any of the properties leading up to the park, I don't want anyone to end up, I can't afford a $10,000 sidewalk. I do think it's a different story when it's new construction and that can be wrapped into a bigger project and a construction loan. And then probably the most important thing that I want to say is regarding the neighboring house and where their front door is, that's impacted by the front yard variation that's requested. If the house was pushed back to fifty feet, there wouldn't be a long tunnel leading to the neighbor's front door. So if that front yard variation is granted, then if the house could be scooted over a little bit, I get that the side yard requirement is met, but there's much more of an impact on that neighboring house if they get the front yard relieved. So just, any amount that it could scoot over would help.
Is your sense that, is your sense that that problem is better ameliorated by increasing the front yard setback or increasing the side yard setback?
I think either or, but to increase that front yard setback enough to where it is past the neighbor's front door, I think you are gonna be back probably close to that fifty feet. And at that point, I think it probably would look goofy, but at least you wouldn't have that tunnel. So I think it would be a good middle ground to, to look at approving that front yard variation, but minimizing that impact to the neighboring property.
I, just as a comment that for everyone's benefit here, apparently, the applicants and their architect, because I know Kipnis is just a really ethical, wonderful architectural company that's been in Evanson for a long time. And one thing that I regret is that they didn't have the opportunity to see the comments from the neighbors before this very evening. So, so, you know, to my knowledge, and so just, just something that I wanted to throw out there so that everyone has the chance to communicate with each other going forward.
Thank you. Any other neighbors? Anybody else?
Is there something in the process that prevents, because I know I talked, when I went to make some changes, I talked to the neighbors, is there something in the process that prevents builders and future homeowners to knock on the doors and, and talk to people around? So they, okay, I just...
There's nothing that prevents it, usually, a lot of people meet right here.
Okay, okay, just wanted to be clear.
Any other neighbors? Anybody else going once, going twice? If you want to speak, please come up. Say what you're saying. She spoke, I know, I don't know what she's saying.
I just want to say one more thing.
Could you keep it brief, ma'am, we'd like to close the record.
I, I will. There are four, it started out with two sinkholes, now it's four sinkholes. And I just want you to know that you better be looking at that because...
Thank you.
Look at that.
Thank you. Would you like to rebut any of the comments? Okay.
I hear everyone's comments about the soil. We did, we did do a soil test on the property to get that information up front. I think we submitted that with the DARPA meeting in that process. We understand the soil bearing condition is the issue. That's why we're elevating the house up high. We got a structural engineer designing the footings accordingly. It's about like a fifteen hundred, you know, pound limit on that soil, below, right at the four-foot mark, everything below that, it just turns to mush. So that's, that's what the sinkhole issue is. So we're aware of that and appreciate everyone mentioning that. We've taken that into consideration and we're doing everything in our part. We don't want the house to sink, obviously, and we're designing it to be there for hopefully a long time.
Can you talk a little bit about the flooding concern and what design elements you're incorporating to try to mitigate the impact of flooding on a house that's, particularly on the house that's so close to the property line next door?
So with the permit process, we submitted a grading and drainage plan, we did a topography on the lot to get that initial information and then the impact of adding that footprint of the proposed house. That's given us some room to play with on that side yard to the east, I'm sorry, to the west. And we're showing that all the grading is swaled out to not impact the neighbor at all. It's all going to the street. And being corner lot, we got a lot of places to the street that we can shed water to. So we're hoping the infrastructure is adequate, but the intention is not to put any runoff directly onto the neighbor's property, period.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask for consideration, is there any play to move the house further away from the property line, which would, one, create more room near the so-called tunnel, which is your neighbor's front door, and also bring the house more in line with the proposed garage?
I will, so it's not uncommon to see this tunnel aspect in this neighborhood, houses are pretty close together. I would maybe alternatively suggest maybe the fence doesn't get put so close to give the neighbor a little extra room. I don't know if you guys want to speak to physically moving the house, that's something we haven't talked about, other than the extra...
See, like, your point, your point is by right, you can build it to five feet from that property line?
We can build it closer than what's proposed, yeah.
And I think the comment, though, is sort of, yes, but the setback that you're asking for on the other side is what's causing that, that tunnel problem. So yes, you have a right to build to that side, but you don't have a right to build to that setback. So if you built to the proper setback, it wouldn't cause that problem, which is why I'm saying there's gotta be a little bit of give and take here, I think.
So I would, I would add to that, that the, the fact that the door, the front door to this house, the neighboring house, is on the side is highly unusual. It seemed like, it didn't make any sense, but it seemed like a front door could be added. It's going in the same, I'm not sure. No, so what I want to say is, in that neighborhood, there's a lot of side entrances that are very narrow, so the tunnel aspect is not unusual, and this is a lot more generous than those other areas.
But it is within your, it is within your power, your proposal, to impact that, that tunneling effect. And I agree with Scott's point that it is the request for the setback in the Wade Street side, whatever we're calling it, the front yard setback, that is creating that tunneling effect. So I think it's a reasonable ask to see, to ask whether there is some play in pushing that house up so that you're not creating that tunneling effect on that front door, which pre-existed before, you know, before you bought the property, so you knew that it was there. And I agree, it's a neighborly request.
I would offer as, just a thought, like, what if the fence weren't so close? And that would kind of mitigate that tunnel aspect.
You still have the mass and the structure there, I don't think that that fully addresses the issue.
So I, I don't know if we want to, you know, speak to some of that. We are pushing it, you know, a foot beyond what we're allowed to do. I don't know if there's additional play with that, I'd have to ask them about that.
And, and if that's, I'm not sure, I mean, we have received testimony from the neighbors, which will stay a part of the record. If that's something that the applicant wants to consider before we, before we rule on this, is that something we could keep the case open if they're not willing to make that decision tonight?
So that's what I was gonna suggest, I think we should get through the record and I think we should leave it open and see if there can be an adaptation that addresses some of the concerns that have been raised. Kind of like the first case we heard tonight that has been back here two other times, but got to a resolution where everybody was more comfortable with it.
I would just add, if we had some direction, like, what is acceptable, like, we can make a decision right now. Like, I don't want to get to the, sorry, I don't want to get to the point where we're another month out, then we got the permit process, and then winter's here and we can't start. So that's kind of the concern that I'm bringing up.
Scott has a comment.
Sure, so it would be up to the applicant to some degree whether there's any, as mentioned, would like to revise the plan in some way to address some of the concerns heard this evening, or would like to request a continuance to the following meeting to, you know, address some of those issues, or request a decision this evening.
We'll give you about five minutes to deliberate.
So, I mean, if we're looking at horse trading here and we ask for them to move the house further into the main yard, perhaps we give on forcing them to move the garage? I mean, you know, I'm, they've requested some direction so that they could get a resolution this evening, and I'm wondering if we have the capacity to do that, or if zoning staff must be the final word on what would be allowable? I mean, zoning has recommended that we deny the variance for the garage, but they have recommended that we accept the variance for the front yard. And so, but the neighbors are more concerned about the front, the side yard setback in which they're in compliance. So I'm just wondering if we couldn't, if it's within our power to say, you know, we're gonna let you have the garage where it is if you move the house in another two feet or whatever.
From my, from my view, so yes, we have the power. From my view, though, if they move the house, then the issue with the garage from zoning standpoint is that it is closer to the street than the principal structure, right? So if they, so, hang on, please, you can, so if they move it a little bit, then at least it's a less deviation.
Exactly.
Right? So maybe they can keep the garage where it is, but it's not so much closer to the street that it's...
Right.
Like a giant deviation like it is in the current drawing where it's almost completely, completely on a different line, different plane.
The problem is that, that if we're denying the proposed location of the garage, and that's the, that's the issue of denial for this, whether you move it, whether you move the house all the way up to that fifteen-foot setback, that's the only way it would be able to comply, and then it doesn't matter because then the garage sits and there is no problem. You move the house, if you're trading off only...
They're talking about moving the house back this way, I don't even know that the garage would, would fit on the back part of the lot.
No, 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 I think he was talking about actually moving it towards Leland.
That's what I'm saying, is I'm saying if they move...
But if you only move it a few, a few feet...
Right, I understand it's not going to be in line with the garage. I'm not suggesting that it will make the garage compliant. What I'm suggesting is it makes it a less deviation that perhaps we're more comfortable granting the variation for than the one that currently is being proposed.
In consideration of the fact that, that their front yard setback is already, the average didn't make any sense. So, you know, to force them to put it fifty feet from the front...
Right, but it doesn't change, whether you move it, unless you move it all the way up to the fifteen-foot marker, it doesn't change the garage situation. And we can't consider it that way because that's not what it's, that's not what, that's not what is, is being written into the proposal.
That's what we're discussing, is whether they modify the proposal that way.
But we can't, how do we decide that? When, if we're following the rules and the way the rules are written...
They're looking for guidance, is all.
Who is though?
Okay, what have you decided? So, speaking with the homeowners, they'd be willing to concede, making instead of that, you know, required five yard, we're proposing six, moving that to ten for that adjacent lot, if that's acceptable. Again, I will, will emphasize that this is, if we look at the site plan here, the footprint of this house is similarly sized to the neighbor, it's only a thousand square feet. It is twenty-six feet high for the flat portion. The higher section, which has been referenced, is on the opposite side of this neighbor. So we're kind of minimizing that, and again, we're trying to work with the soil condition that's forcing us to put this house higher than normal, realizing that that's an issue. But I think they're, they're okay with doing the setback, the side yard setback adjacent to the neighbor to ten feet.
So that's moving it another four feet.
Four, four feet additional.
Carol, I would like your input. I think that that's a very reasonable, it seems to me that that's a very reasonable compromise to move that to ten feet and that we concede that the garage could stay where it is. But I would like, I mean, I'm not an architect, Carol, and, you know, Myrna, Carol, I'd like for you to weigh in, what do you think?
I think that the suggestion of ten feet is definitely better than what it is. I would agree with the comment by the architect that, let's say, the rules of the ordinance require five feet, they put it at six. Still, looking at the massing and at the neighbors, it is, it's an imposing structure that it will be there. So the more we push it away from this actually west property line, the better. So I would say ten feet is a reasonable compromise. I personally, I don't like the position of the garage frankly, just from, like, looking at this. But with this development of the, of the building, the garage, the garage is there and we prefer the garage to be next to the alley, so that's, that's the thing. Whether it could be shifted, the garage down and up, by the way, I may ask my colleague, my architect, this is a really weird site plan with the north direction. You know American standard, north should be to the top or to the right, never to the left. So it's absolutely confusing for me, but just, it's just a note. Anyway, so I would say that, given all the things that we heard, a ten feet is a reasonable compromise and I would accept that.
I'm, I'm good with the ten feet as well. I mean, I think it's a compromise, you know, at that point, then the proposed garage would stay where it is right now, in my view. stay where it is right now, in my view. There's no need to move it back. And actually now, if you think about it, yes, they've lost a little bit of their side yard, but now they're gaining it behind the garage.
Right.
Yep. Mr. Contreras, what did you decide?
Yeah, I mean, that, that seems reasonable to us. Moving the garage to comply with that setback with the principal building would require us to kind of get rid of that existing tree, which we wanted to just kind of keep and minimize the impact of the site. So I, I think that's reasonable to move that house up additional four feet and just go from there. I mean, that's an easy change for us to do.
I would feel more comfortable in supporting this proposal if we are able to move the house, the principal structure as being described. One issue that I think still remains, which I'm not sure the way we want to address, is the sidewalk issue. I thought it was sort of clear in my head, you know, that, you know, the neighbor needs to advocate, you know, to the city and to the aldermen. I, I take your point that you raised Muffy about it being an equity issue and attaching the cost of the sidewalk to the specific homeowners when infrastructure. I don't, you know, I don't know why, what the history is, why the infrastructure is not there. I understand Melissa's point that it would impact different properties differently. I think it's an issue that requires more study than us being able to
Determine that.
Determine that right now.
That's right.
Well, and I, I don't agree that, you know, somebody coming into Evanston should pay for what the city should be requiring, or should actually give to the residents. Because then at that point, it just sets precedent that every one of you as neighbors, if the city requires you to put a sidewalk and you don't, you can't afford it, then you should have one. And you can't just say, let's just roll it into the loan, because it doesn't work that way. That's honestly, that's the way it is.
Well, Melissa did make the point that it's when you come before zoning and you ask for zoning relief that the opportunity exists to request infrastructure improvement. But here again, I'm wondering
Yes, but that would be, the city should be providing you, you should have sidewalks, water, electricity, and everything else as part of your moving into a city. Not in, you're not moving into unincorporated Evanston. You're moving into basically a city and you should have city sidewalks.
There are a lot of lots in Evanston
No, I, I understand that. But that doesn't, that doesn't, we should not be taking that burden away from the city by giving a new resident who is now going to be paying property taxes and everything else to now basically roll for a sidewalk that the city should have paid for years ago, not now.
Up to the podium, please.
Could you speak into the microphone? Yes. As 2415, when, when I was recently here, I understand that when you change a place, then you have to bring it up to code. And so I just want to be clear, we're going to, on a very busy park that kids come to, we're going to have kids, when this house built, have to walk down the middle of a street to get to the park. That's what we're agreeing to. And there's no way to put, if they don't put the sidewalk in.
That's not what we're agreeing to. So what we're trying to figure out is who, whether that's a zoning issue, whether it's appropriate for zoning to require that, or whether that's a city issue.
Okay. And then the last, there is no line, if you look down a street in Leland, right, and you see every house is lined up, there's nothing about this house that's lined up on Leland that would be lined up on Wade. It's, it's not aligned on anything. And you then are putting a five-foot-high fence. I mean, there's nothing about this house that is aligned with what is in, it's the last empty lot on the block. There's nothing about this house that's going to be in alignment with anything that's there. And I understand you want to build an ecological, beautiful, I have solar panels too, but everything I've heard is about what for the neighbor, for him, which is your lot, yes, but it also has to be also how things fit in to what's there. And so you can't look down, the house is going to be in, it's the drive, it's the only house that's going to have a garage that sticks out. It's going to have a high fence around the entire house that doesn't exist anything else. It's taller than everything else. Now you're going to have three houses on a block that are in different depth levels. One's at 50, one's that they're different. There's just nothing that's common. So I look at Evanston, I know there's some eclectic, but there seems like there's rules around, things need to look something alike. And I'm just trying to understand one thing about this house structure that looks like it attended to something that was already there in a very old, established neighborhood. Just show me something that connects to what was there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vialetta, I want to be clear, I thought we closed the record and so the applicant had a chance to rebut, so I want to be careful about procedure.
He's actually rebutting at this point, that's a whole part of it.
I'm, in terms of opening it back up to neighbors is my question. Well, I appreciate the input, I want to be careful about procedure. My question is to Scott, is the proposed five-foot fence allowed for a corner lot? There's no variance, so as of right, that is allowed, right?
That's correct.
So, you know, we've had, you know, one other point I would make is that we've had these lots, these other lots that have been vacant for tens of years, and people sort of come to embrace them as open space. And I get it, we're in a tight urban sort of dense area and open space is prized, and so this has sort of become a part of their open space. And so it's going to feel different, and it might look different, but, you know, if a five-foot fence is, is allowed by right on a corner lot, then, you know, I think there are some areas where we can ask the applicant to consider sort of how best to fit in with the, you know, the adjacent lots. And there are areas where we cannot, I don't think it's within our purview. And I think it, you know, it might, it's going to feel different because this lot was vacant for 40 years, is my point, I think. Are we as a board, do we have outstanding issues that we need to discuss before we can make a motion?
Can I just respond to her? I would just like to point out the, the house to the south, in fact, might be more aligned with that proposed location of the garage. It's kind of in the same plane from the perspective of the street. So I think that's compatible. And then also on Wade itself, being kind of edge-aligned with the neighboring building, and just kind of relating to that aspect. So I just, we did think about things like that and how we're positioning the proposed locations of this.
Okay, thank you. If you're finished with your rebuttal, we're going to close the record. Okay, board?
So just framing, just framing it before we get to the comments. So the, the way I'm thinking of it is that the, if we approve this, then it would be with the, we would approve the proposal as is with the condition that the principal structure be moved four feet further into the side yard.
That can be how we do it?
And the garage would be
We could take a small intermission if anybody wants to use the bathroom, stretch your legs or whatever, until our recording is picked back up, sorry. Okay, we're back online. So now, any comments from the board before I read the standards?
Sorry, we were talking, yeah, there are comments. We were talking about the sidewalk issue. I, I haven't weighed in on that issue yet, but I, my personal feeling is I don't think it's appropriate for the city to tax someone who purchases a piece of property by requiring them to put in city infrastructure as part of it.
I completely agree.
That's my personal feeling on it. I don't know that it doesn't mean we don't have the power to do it or to require it. We, we very well may, but to me, it doesn't sit right.
I agree.
Don't disagree with it.
It could break, it could break the project.
It could break the project, and it also could set a precedent where people stop buying properties in Evanston because they don't want the city to make them put in who knows what.
What, next, what would be, electricity, water?
You need to repair the telephone pole on your property.
Sewer, yeah.
No, no, no. Yes, you, yes, you do, but
And water, yes.
Right, but if, if you don't have a pole, you know, do you have to now put a pole in the alley? I mean, it doesn't make any sense.
I, that said, I do empathize with everybody that's raised the problem about the sidewalks, and it seems like that's a discussion that needs to happen with the city as a safety issue, perhaps, but I don't, I don't think, I don't think requiring this applicant to put in a stretch of sidewalk that doesn't even complete the project or solve the problem is, is the right answer.
Well, here's the problem. At the point that the neighbors go to the city and say, you need to put the sidewalk in, the city's going to have to ask these people for permission to have an easement on their property to put a sidewalk in. So, you know, that is, is that not true?
It's being proposed to be on the public right of way. It's not, they don't own the property in the public right of way.
So then, do we have consensus to make a motion on the issue of where the principal structure is located on the lot and the, and the garage? Are there, are there any other points to discuss before we make a motion?
Yeah, we usually would go through the standards before we make the motion.
No, I understand that. I just want to, I want to understand if there's any outstanding issues that we need as a board to discuss.
No. Scott? No? No? Okay, so are we ready for the standards?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. At 11:30 at night, I am going to go through these standards. The variance standards. For the ZBA to recommend approval of a variance, the ZBA must find that the proposed variance A will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of the adjoining properties. The surrounding properties are a mix of single-family residences. The massing height and sighting of the proposed residence is consistent with approximate buildings and complies with all other zoning requirements for the R2 district. B is in keeping
Let me just add to that standard.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you were going to move to the next standard, right? So let me
I was, go ahead.
Let me just add to the, add the comment. So this is about substantial adverse impact, and I feel that with the condition, moving the house further off of the abutting property line, that we're mitigating the adverse impact on the immediate neighbor.
Thank you. Okay, B, next standard, is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. The proposed additional addition promotes the public health, morals, general welfare, and objectives of the comprehensive general plan, as well as enhance the taxable value of a currently dilapidated section of the property. However, the proposal is not in keeping with the intense, intent of the ordinance section 6-46-3A2, which prohibits an accessory structure located closer to the street-side yard than the principal structure. The intent of this section is to ensure the creation of a strong street edge and to prevent irregularities in building location along the vehicular corridors. I would comment on that, that in consideration of the applicant's agreement to move the principal structure another 10 feet or 10 feet off of the side yard lot line, that, that mitigates the non-compliance with the location of the garage and that, that is, there's a public benefit in that consideration. We leave the garage where it is. Okay.
I agree.
You agree? Okay. C, has a hardship or practical difficulty that is peculiar to the property. The front yard setback condition is peculiar to the property because there are only two structures within 200 feet on the same side of the street, in the same block, and one of these has an unusual front yard depth of 80 feet. However, there is no practical difficulty peculiar to the subject property in regards with the relationship between the proposed accessory and the principal structure and compliance is possible. The lot width is 25 feet greater than the minimum required and the lot size is nearly 3,000 square feet larger than the minimum lot size for the R2 district. Comments? Okay, D, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. Construction without the proposed zoning relief for the front yard setback would result in a significant reduction of a buildable area, which would not provide adequate space for the property owner's needs. No hardship or practical difficulty exists in regards to the detached garage and the proposed, proposal willingly does not adhere to the zoning code when compliance is possible. The applicant could meet compliance by either moving the principal structure closer to the street side yard, we talked about, or moving the detached garage to the west to align with the proposed location of the principal structure. The argument that inheritance to the code would not permit a reasonably private yard is unsupported. Staff determine that a reasonable and private side and rear yard is feasible if the principal structure were to move to the east and align with the required street side yard. Additionally, the applicant is proposing a solid fence to provide privacy and screen the side yard from Leland Avenue. The lot width, 60 feet, is 25 feet wider than the minimum required for the R2 district. Okay, E, is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property or public benefit to the whole would be derived. The proposed construction of a single-family residence and detached garage will increase the taxable value of the now vacant lot and add to the vibrancy of the surrounding neighborhood. F, does not have a hardship or practical difficulty that was created by any person having an interest in the property. The hardship or practical difficulty relating to the front yard setback is created due to the unique circumstances of only two lots being in the same block on the same side of the street as a subject property, and one of said lots having a much deeper setback than is typical, both in the neighborhood and in Evanston. There is no hardship or practical difficulty related to the location of the accessory structure. G is limited I'm sorry, go. I feel as though we'd need to be commenting on the, the location of the accessory structure because as you respond to the standards, you are utilizing the city's ramifications for recommending that we deny that. But we're not denying it, we are allowing it. And therefore, I would propose that once again, in consideration of moving the principal structure 10 feet off of the side yard, that the deviation for the requested location of the proposed garage is mitigated adequately that it's acceptable. Anybody else?
Agree.
Anybody else? Agree with? Okay, good. G, is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty. The proposed front yard setback is the minimum necessary to provide a habitable and functional living space while providing an appropriate distance between principal and accessory buildings. The proposed location of the accessory structure is not the minimum necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty since no hardship or practical difficulty exists and compliance is achievable. However, in consideration of the moving of the principal structure 10 feet off the side lot, the proposed garage location is acceptable as a lesser deviation, and therefore we agree that it is in compliance.
I agree. I just, Scott, let me ask a question. I know we're going through the standards, but it may be an appropriate comment. As the, as the structure is moved 10 feet off of that property line, the owner may decide it actually, I mean, it's close enough, you may decide you want to move the garage so that it's actually in alignment with where you're putting the principal structure? That would be fine. If, if we approve this, they're still allowed to build it further down in line with the principal structure, correct?
Essentially, I mean, typically you have a condition that it's in substantial compliance with the documents, testimony, and records. You might want to
You'd say no further than where it is.
Yes, you might just want to append that condition if you suggest that condition that, with the exception of the
Right, you may decide once you move the house that the, it's close enough that you just want to align the garage.
Okay, who's going to call the motion? Who's, who's doing that?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Yeah, before you comment, please.
I move in the matter 19ZMJV-0071 with respect to the property at 2412 Wade Street, that we grant, as the determining body, we grant the major zoning relief requested subject to the following conditions. The principal structure will be no closer than 10 feet to the property line of 2416 Wade, and the proposed garage may not encroach any further on the Leland side than it's currently proposed, but may be brought in line with the principal structure once that's been moved. Are there, were there any other conditions? Oh, sorry, last, that the owner not be required to install sidewalks as the proposal, as had been recommended.
Friendly amendment that the site be, that the proposal be done in substantial compliance with the testimony and documents presented here this evening.
Yep.
Waiting on a second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you are passed on to our determining body.
Talk with your project.
Thank you so much. Okay. There is a final motion I'm asking for, the motion for adjournment.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Oh, second, third.
Okay, so moved. Adjourn till September 17.